A credit union is run by volunteers. We have a volunteer board of directors where a bank has cooperators and trustees. If you have a $5 member account, then you are basically an owner of the credit union. You have a right to vote at meetings and so on and so forth. Whereas a bank, you're just a customer. So you actually take ownership of the credit union by becoming a member of the credit union.
Ready? Ready? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the workshop meeting of April 23rd, 2014. Would you all rise and pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll open the public meeting now at 6:02 according to that clock. Adam.
First of all, I want to say this was great, great attendance tonight. So I want to appreciate everyone who takes the time tonight to come out this evening for the public hearing that we're going to have regarding the May 1st town meeting and the May 13th election. My name is Adam Goddard. I'm the town administrator here in Spencer for those that don't know me here or those at home that do not know me. I'm going to run through a series of slides. It's a public hearing, so we do hope to have some dialogue back and forth. If there's questions, please feel free to answer it. Feel free to raise your hand. If you could just ask a question through the chairman, if you could give your name and your address when you stand, that'd be great for our record-keeping along the minutes. So with that, we're going to move into the discussion. So the purpose of tonight was we want to present facts to the citizens of Spencer that they relate to the history, the process, and the impact of the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District budget assessments on the town's general government operating budget. And then to answer any questions from the public in order to prepare for the big events that we have coming up the next couple of weeks. The May 1st town meeting, which is a Thursday, will be starting at 7:00 p.m. in the Gray Hall upstairs. And then the May 13th elections are to be held, which the purposes of that are we have two override questions. And I'll explain the purposes of that. The town of Spencer has general bylaws that set our annual town meeting date as the first Thursday of the month of May and the annual town election where there will not only be override questions, but there will also be ballot questions for electing certain town officials such as your two office spots in the board of selectmen, school committee, and other. But the May 13th election is a performance of the bylaws, which is the second, Tuesday of the year. So tonight, I'm going to go through some recent fiscal history. I'm going to talk about where we've been over the last five or six years as a town, sharing probably a similar story with most towns and also with folks at home dealing with the economic situation of the last half decade. Talk about why we haven't asked for any overrides up until this point now, what we've been able to do to avoid that situation and why it's necessary now. I'll talk about what happened last year, recent Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District budget history and how that impacted our budget last year and how that impacts our budget this year. I'll go through a summary of the FY '15 budget. Right now, we're currently in FY 2014. This fiscal year will end on June 30th, and then our new budget year begins on July 1st. I'll discuss Proposition 2.5 override. What is it exactly? What does it allow us to do? And hopefully clear up some of those rumors about what overrides are. I'll talk about the election information. When is it? Where is it? What's on the ballot? Also, talk about the impact of the override approvals. If we vote in favor of these overrides, what happens? And then also the reverse of that. What is the impact if the override questions fail? And then at the end, we'll have a nice block of time for some questions to answer. So as far as recent fiscal history, as everybody knows, starting in 2001, a major economic downturn, and it seriously impacted us as a town government. The town has three main sources of revenue. We have tax levy, we have state aid, and we have what we call local receipts. Local receipts mean excise tax, permits, fines, miscellaneous collections. Starting with state aid cuts in FY 2008, we were at a peak for the town of Spencer of about $2.8 million in state local aid. And that comes from lottery revenue that the state uses to then redistribute back to the communities. That revenue dropped severely in FY 2009 when we had the crash. The governor of Massachusetts implemented what they call 9C cuts, and he was allowed to basically cut fiscal local aid in the middle of a budget year. So we had budgeted that whole fiscal year based on a certain amount of revenue that was expected to come from the state. And in the middle of the year, it dropped us $400,000 approximately. That number continued to decline until a low point of $2.1 million last year, in our last fiscal year, for a total net loss of $751,000 or 26% over that five, six-year period. We also, as I mentioned, received a portion of our revenue. It's called local receipts. Again, excise tax, building permits, dog licenses, fines, investment income, and other miscellaneous revenue. Again, we were at a peak high in 2008 of about $2.6 million. And then we had a severe drop in that one year. Again, people stopped buying cars, people stopped building homes, applying permits. And in one year, our collections in terms of that revenue, investment income, obviously crashed because of the stock market. We lost almost $600,000 in revenue. And then we reached the low of $1.865 in FY 2011, a loss of $735,000 in that period. So between those two numbers, we're almost at $1.55 million loss of revenue that we were using to support services in our budget and our assessments with schools and also other government services. At the same period that we were losing money, we also had to deal with increases in regional school assessments. We have a regional, we're a member of a traditional regional school, traditional in terms of traditional education. That's Spencer East Brookfield. We're also a member of a regional vocational school. There's 10 member towns that are part of Southern Worcester County or Bay Path. And then we have several students that attend out-of-district programs that aren't offered at either our traditional school or vocational school. The town's budget for education has risen. In that same period that I was talking about that we were losing money, our education budget increased by 25% or $1.7 million from $6.8 million to almost $8.00, or just over $8.5 million. So you can see the impact on our town budget. We're roughly around $18 to $20 million per year. There's about a $3 million hit or more in terms of how we attack or how we handle our budget. We also had increased pension liability costs. We're part of the Worcester Regional Retirement System. We experienced a heavy increase due to their funding liabilities that increased by 75% to $235,000 over that same period. And then even next year, we're experiencing almost 11% increase of $50,000 in one year. So all while this was going on, from FY 2008 to FY 2014, there was a one request by the town to increase the tax levy, ask the public for additional taxes to offset these impacts that were happening on the budget. So the board did a lot of different things. The town did a lot of different things to avoid that scenario. I want to go through those now. So there's several different things that the board did, this board and other board, and myself, and then started with previous town administrators. One of the things that we had to deal with was health insurance cost control. One of those things that have been impacting towns, impacting you as a user, it's been prevalent in federal government, state government discussions. Health insurance cost control primarily was, has been a great benefit for town employees. They're always known as receiving great benefits, however, have reduced salaries. And that has always been a traditional offset. However, as premiums started to increase by about 10% on average per year for every municipality, the board, starting back in 2006 and then all the way through up until this year, realized that that's not a sustainable cost. When we're dealing with Proposition 2.5, we're dealing with school budget assessments. We can't continue to operate as a community with the 10% on average premiums. So something had to be done. So starting in 2006, the first discussion about how to offset these increases was addressing retiree premium contribution rates. So the town, under state law, is required to pay a portion of retiree benefits in terms of health insurance after they retire. That percentage back in 2005 was 85% contribution from the town and 15% contribution from the employee, even retirede. So what they decided back then is to try and change that, burden, shift that burden, but not do it all at once, was to change by 1% per year over 25 years to the point where it would be 60/40. 60% contribution from the town, 40% from the employee. Currently, we're nine years into it, so in FY 2014, retirees are paying 24%, up from 15%. The other thing we did was in FY 2011, towns typically will offer multiple plans to employees based on need, based on structure, based on co-pays, or based on just the fact that, you know, here in New England, we're pretty fortunate to have multiple plans available to us. Hous, Harvard, Pilgrim, Blue Cross Blue Shield, et cetera. However, there's a cost to that. When you have smaller groups going into two separate plans versus one larger group, and one big plan, the possible premium is higher, obviously. So one of the things we did in 2011 was we negotiated with our bargaining units, because this is something that's subject to collective bargaining. You have to bargain changes in terms of benefits with employees. We bargained to change from two plans to one. And also, at the same time, what we did was we joined a large group or conglomerate of other towns, other school districts that purchase insurance through what we call MYA, Massachusetts Inter-Local Insurance Association. That one year, that by making this change helped us avoid a 20% increase. In 2013, two years ago, we approached the town employees. Again, we were dealing with the revenue shortfalls and we're dealing with higher costs. We approached the employees when we were facing a 3.5% increase in health insurance that year and asked if they would consider paying a higher co-pay. So we increased co-pays, doctor visits from, say, $10 to $15, emergency room visits from $50 to $100. By doing that, we were able to avoid a 3.5% increase. We did that without the employees asking for anything back in return. We're doing that again next year. We've already negotiated with our collective bargains this year in preparation for July 1st, 2015. When we received our renewal quote the last couple of months, we were looking at a 3.75% increase, which actually isn't too bad compared to the 10% that we've been looking at. However, knowing the situation that we're dealing with, we asked them again, would you be willing to increase your co-pays again to avoid this cost with no exchange or benefit? Because they certainly could say, okay, we'll do that, but we want an extra vacation, we want additional pay, whatever. They agreed to do it with nothing in return, and we avoided 3.75%. And the change we made was, again, doctor visits increasing the co-pay that the employee pays when they visit the doctor. Finally, in terms of health insurance cost control, active employee premium contribution rates, they were as high as 80/20 going back three years ago. And the board of selectmen back then made the conscious decision, again, this is not something that's sustainable. The town paying 80% of health insurance and employees only paying 20, we need to make a change there. So over the last three-year period, we negotiated with all of our collective bargaining units. We went to town meeting, changed the personnel bylaws. And all the contract department heads, like myself, the police chief, the fire chief, all the contract department heads, we all agreed to change to 40%. So it was a shift in the burden by 20%, which will show you how that relates to the budget, how we were able to avoid continuously out-of-control costs in terms of health insurance. The other thing that we did, another reason why we were able to avoid asking people to increase their taxes was we made personnel reductions. It's not something that's fun to do. It's not something that we certainly enjoyed the last few years, but we had to make conscious decisions when positions came up or as we evaluate certain positions, whether they were needed, based on the downward economy, based on retirements, based on just opportunities to share with other towns, to make some conscious choices in terms of reductions. And these, obviously, when you reduce a position or you restructure a position, it obviously has a positive impact in terms of your budget, in terms of, you know, helping offset that revenue shortfall and other costs elsewhere in the budget. So what we did, starting in 2009, my first year when I was here, we eliminated a part-time board of health clerk, part-time building inspector position. There used to be a part-time parts and recreation director in 2000, up until 2008. We have none now. That board, parts and rent is strictly handled by a volunteer board. We reduced the full-time town planner, which used to be me. We changed that by regionalizing with the town of Leicester. They were having a budget shortfall as well. They had a full-time position. We were looking to save costs. We asked if they would come over and have that person come over on a part-time basis and support us. So there's obviously reduction in service there. But it was something that we had to do at the time, based on the fact that it was a vacant position. We avoided unemployment costs, and it just seemed like we were enjoying the time. We also reduced our full-time building inspectors on part-time now, starting in 2013. The full-time town accountant got reduced to, she used to be 40 hours a week, she's only 10 hours a week right now. We eliminated the part-time benefits coordinator/human resources director. We don't have a human resources director anymore. Once she retired, we got rid of the position. And now what we've done is we've obviously had, still have human resources issues, but we spread them out across other departments. And we also hired a private vendor to help us with benefits coordination, taking people on insurance, off insurance. If you have a baby, you need to add a dependent, things like that. We have an outside vendor to help us with those things. And FY 2014, when the assessors junior clerk left for a full-time position vacancy in another department, we eliminated that position in the last fiscal year. We also eliminated our part-time information technology coordinator or an IT staff person. We now use a private vendor to help us. When things break down, we call, basically, call 911 in terms of IT and then come and fix it rather than having someone in-house as some other town might do. One of the last things we did that we, in order to avoid override, again, maintain services, avoid asking for additional tax money, was asking employees to make personal wage adjustments. Again, these people were dealing with the same economic times that we folks at five offices were dealing with at home, but in order to keep this town going, keep jobs, and keep the services that most of these people who live in town are working for, on behalf of, and also benefiting from, we asked them to make all these adjustments. So going back to FY 2010, all the contract department heads took wage freezes. The police association took freezes in a couple of different years. Our town hall clerks' union took wage freezes. Our highway department, which also is made up of water and sewer, took wage freezes. The utility facilities took a week's parole on paying one year. And going back, the board of selectmen also, I think twice, once you reduced your salary from about 50%, and then the year after that eliminated the stipend altogether. So these gentlemen up here are working for free where, I know, towns, some around us, their stipends for their selectmen are upwards of $8,000 per year. So actually, one other final slide in terms of overrides. Over the last six years, you know, we obviously are going to experience some increases, but we've also experienced some deductions from some of the departments that provide services in town. So over that six-year period, you've seen your board of selecting budget go down by almost 80%. My budget, the town administrator budget, which is myself, my assistant, and our supply budget and expense budget has gone down by about 11%. Our town accountant has been reduced. Our town council has been reduced by almost 50%. Otis, which is Office of Development Inspection Services, which has the board of health agent, I'm sorry, the building inspector, the town planner, conservation agent, that's where we lost some of the personnel. That department's gone down. You can see from 270 to 218 over that time. The street wardens' budget's been cut. Parks and Rec, I mentioned that before, we used to have a part-time staff person and did more with parks and rec programs. We used to have a summer adventure program, which we eliminated a couple of years ago. That budget went from $100,000 to $23,000 over that time, 77% deduction. In addition, we didn't have some increases, but I just wanted to show, you know, we had some increases. They were, if you spread those out over a six-year period, they were actually pretty modest, including board assessors, the treasurer collectors, town park, and fire department all in that 13, 16% range. Over six years, you're talking about 2.5% to 3% increases. Our transportation in the six-year period only went up 2%. Our board of health was minus 6%, $3,900. And employee benefits, this is the one that was key. Our other towns were going from $1.5 million and then seeing that going up, $150,000 one year, and then $165,000 the next year. We avoided that, and over that six-year period, we only went up 6% or 1% per year. So I just want to get a little history there, kind of paint a little picture for everyone in that, you know, we've been dealing with an economic situation for some time as a general government, just like people at home have. And what we've been able to do is we've been able to maintain core services. We have eliminated some positions. We've lost some hours, made reductions. But at the end of the day, we're still down the streets, we're still showing up when you dial 911, and there's still open houses at town hall. Despite the fact that we lost almost $1.5 million in revenue that supported our budget, and we had, I think it was $1.7 million in additional school system costs over that same period, those are all the things that we were able to do and not ask the taxpayers for additional money. Unfortunately, based on what I'm going to describe to you now, we can no longer operate that way without making serious reductions. So that is why we're asking the voters for a choice, to make either see a serious reduction in services or if they would consider additional tax levy and retainment services. So starting with last year in May 2013, actually, it started in December of 2012 when there was a crisis related to the existing superintendent at that time. They were made aware by the school auditors that there was a major funding deficit, major deficit gap in terms of the regional school district budget. That led to the eventual separation with the superintendent and then some, and then state being involved, sending in an interim business manager and as acting superintendent at the time. Up in May 13th, May of 2013 of last year, if you recall, the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District saw that they had a $3.3 million gap in their 24, $25 million budget. So what they did was, they first, they had to address the current year, 2013, with some borrowing. And then for 2014, FY 2014, they were asking for an additional 35% increase in terms of our contribution and East Brookfield's contribution to fund the gap. That request was overwhelmingly rejected at both town meeting and in both override elections in both communities. They then, in accordance with law, they were then allowed to regroup, take 30 days, amend their budget. They did that. They reduced it from 35% to 26%. I think it went from $3.3 million to something like $2.7 million. That was, again, in July, we held special town meetings in response to them amending their budget. They were approved. However, those approvals were contingent upon override. Again, you know, our budget is in the $8.8 million range. We couldn't fund, you know, $2 million plus within that budget without additional revenue. So we had a contingent upon our override. We asked for an override. September of 2013, the override failed overwhelmingly, a second time. So that led us up to October of 2013, last year, this past fall. Spencer East Brookfield again revised their budget, lowering the assessment this time from about 26% increase to 17% increase. Keep in mind, typical increases, you know, the 2% to 3%. And then, based on that, they scheduled what they call a district-wide meeting. So voters from both East Brookfield and from Spencer in October were asked or invited to come to a meeting at David Proudy High School in which they would have an opportunity to approve of this revised budget. At that time, there was a motion made to amend this number by about half, you can see 8.5%. That was approved at that district-wide meeting. However, it failed. When we came out of that meeting, two days later, or three days later, on Tuesday night, the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District needed a 2/3 vote of that committee to adopt that compromised number, but they only had four votes, not five, out of seven. So that number failed. So based on that, because of the fact that we went through all this process, these multiple town meetings, multiple override requests, multiple elections, the district-wide meeting, because the budget was not approved during that whole time, and here we are almost halfway through the fiscal year, the Department of Education came in at the end of November. It was right before Thanksgiving. They came in and they set the number at the 8.5% amount plus an additional $120,000 or a little reserve amount for emergencies, which essentially led to a $701,000 increase in our budget in terms of expenses. So we now had a bill that was $701,000 that we had to pay, that we had planned back in May, the town meeting, when we adopted our budget. So based on that, we had to hold a special town meeting in December in order to revise our town budget that we set, basically taking $700,000 from our revenue or making cuts or doing transfers to offset that $701,000 so we could balance the town and school budgets and get tax bills out before December 31st and then start generating some revenue to pay for the services that we've been providing. The way we did that at our town meeting, first time, is we took $400,000 of what we call free cash or retained earnings from the town side. We took, made $187,000 in cuts, reducing certain accounts, and also we had a little bit of new growth, which helped us offset that $701,000. Now, we don't, we're not in a situation, and we'll talk about that now in terms of FY '15, that reserve money's gone. The reserve money that we usually typically will use now in May for capital purchases, we'll use it to buy a dump truck, we'll use it to fix the roof on the library, garage doors on the fire station. So we took $400,000 of that money. We typically averaged around $600. I think we had $800 in the fall. $400 of that went out the window and gone forever. So now we're dealing with approaching fiscal year 2015. So we started our fiscal 2015 budget, we typically start right after Thanksgiving, meet with the board of selectmen, they assign goals for myself, I relay those to the department heads. They start submitting budget requests, capital requests, and then after Christmas, we come back. January 1st, we start meeting, we start going through the budget, hashing it out. We have multiple public hearings with the finance committee. This year, with the board of selectmen, we did something new, which we call the municipal services review, in which we analyze every penny that is spent in every department and how it relates to every service that we provide, how it relates to staffing levels, and how it relates to expense budget. We did that in an attempt to evaluate our budget, knowing that we would not be able to continue doing things the same as we had year before or four years prior, because we knew we were going to have a deficit, that $701,000 we use reserves. And start our budget for next year, basically, the Department of Education set a baseline budget, a threshold, and was saying, this is the amount of money that the towns of Spencer East Brookfield need to contribute to the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. So we knew with that starting point, we had a $701,000 carryover from the year before. So already, we know we're behind eight ball. We have a structural deficit built into our budget. We are going to have to do things differently. One of the things we could talk, we were going to talk about wasn't override, but before we ask the taxpayers for additional levy, just to go ahead and fund what we've been funding all the time, we spent the last six months with multiple public hearings. People here, multiple people I see here were at those hearings. And every department head, we marched them in here, and they sat in front of this board on TV, answered questions about service levels, what it would mean if we made a reduction in your department, how does that impact the programs that you offer at your, the department? So we've gone through a serious critique to try to come up with an idea of what services are absolutely core, absolutely necessary, that we have to provide, and which ones are we going to not do any longer because we just can't afford to? And which ones do we want to do, but at the end of the day, if we're going to do those, if we're going to afford those, we're going to need additional levy and additional revenue from them. And that's where override come in, and I'll talk about that in a couple of seconds. So in addition to our $701,000 deficit that carried over from last year, Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District voted on March 7th when they said to adopt their budget at $24,151,000. And they submitted those assessments to the town of Spencer East Brookfield. Our increase this year was 7%. That's $538,000 higher than last year. So their budget is made up of, and I'll show it in detail in a second, minimum local contribution, which the Department of Education says you have to pay, regional transportation, which obviously you have to bus your kids to school, any debt associated with any building projects. For us, it's why a village for East Brookfield's elementary school. And then on top of that, an additional local assessment. So our additional local assessment from last year was $701,000 higher than the year before. This year, they tacked on another $315, which is bringing that over $1 million. That alone is a 45% increase in just that one little line. And again, we're dealing with limits of 2.5. We're dealing with, you know, and I'll show you in a budget in a second, what 2.5 really is in terms of our levy. And I made the statement when the superintendent was here, making his presentation, the question was about sustainability. And if you recall, I said, you know, this is something that's not, this obviously isn't sustainable. But now, again, we just can't afford that in a normal year, never mind the year that we're dealing with now. So that's going to have some ramifications as I work through this. In addition, we also saw an increase in our budget for next year for Bay Path, Southern Worcester County Vocational. Bay Path has a science of 11% increase this year. That number, again, is set by the Department of Education in terms of what their minimum local contribution is. They are not asking for anything additional. They only fund us the minimum. So people are asking, why are you not asking for an override for Bay Path? They're asking us the bare minimum. And they have, ever since I've been here, they've never asked for any more than that. And actually, they've gotten in trouble, and they haven't spent enough from the Department of Education. So that is why this is not included in the override, even though it's $78,000 higher than it was last year. One of the main reasons why that number is up is because they went from 120 students to 133. So now you have a shift in students, so we have an additional cost to fund those students to go there. As I mentioned before, we have a liability increase of almost 11% in our Worcester County Regional Retirement System. In addition, there's some other things that impact the budget. We've restored the cuts that were made in the fall at the summer town meeting. I mentioned the special town meeting that was held so we could balance that $701,000 deficit. We did that with that $400,000 in reserves and also made some cuts. We restored those. We made, you know, when we had the starting point with this budget, we basically said we still need these things, and, you know, we tucked them. These are things like, I think it was full-time, those fire department salaries, and there were some larger items, like senior center. I'll talk about those. And this is one of them, we reinserted the relocation of senior center to Maple Street. If you recall, last year, when the regional school district had their budget issues, one of the things they did was vote to close Maple Street School, relocate those students to Lake Street, shift some other students around. students to Lake Street, shift some other students around, the school came backwards. So now, we've been in a situation since last July, and started what to do with the school. Conversation was, let's find a permanent location for our seniors, uh, and now they rent fishing game, from the fishing game club. So that's back in the budget, and that is something that is being asked on the override, and that's something that the board would like to do. We've restored fire department training for firefighters, which has been cut over the years, we put that back in the budget. Uh, we have a stormwater management mandate, where we've been required since two thousand and three by the United States Environmental Protection Agency to spend money on different programs in terms of stormwater to ensure water quality, this goes back to the, you know, the water protection there. Um, so that, there's money in there for that. We also made some transfer station adjustments, if you've been following along with us the last few years, we've had a, a deficit in our transfer station where we had, have, had an operating budget as high as four hundred thousand dollars and only revenue coming in, about three hundred thousand dollars running a gap, uh, in that, so the board tried to make some adjustments, we adjusted the fees, and then we adjusted the way we're gonna operate that facility starting July first, so that's in the, in the budget. And also, uh, there's a one percent increase for collective bargaining unit employees and also for, um, non-union personnel. So we came up at a point in time where we were at the end of the contract before collective bargaining is, police, dispatchers, highway, and town hall, uh, needing to start July one with a new contract, and what we did was try to negotiate the lowest possible, uh, increase, uh, knowing that these employees, as you saw on that slide before, have been taking wage freezes, they've been adjusting their co-pays, they've been adjusting their health insurance contribution. This is not their fault, this is not their fault, it's not fair then, uh, to take another zero, so that's what we tried to do, something as modest as that. This is the town general government budget, again, we're gonna see a budget overhaul, about twenty-one million, the town's general government budget is about eight point eight. Um, we have, uh, general government is just over one million, that includes everything here at town hall, uh, the assessors office, accountant's office, town clerk, my office, et cetera, public safety is office of police and fire, land use and plan, which is actually in town hall, that's our, our development and inspection, office of development inspection services, public works, which includes highway, transfer station, um, utility facilities, tree ward, et cetera, public health and human services, which is, uh, board health, veteran agent, council and aging, culture and recreation, which is our library and parks and rec. We do have some debt that we're required to pay, over and above and beyond our obligations to the school district for Wired Village. We are making payments on, um, we have a ladder truck that we bought several years ago, we made improvements to this building a couple of years ago, town purchased, uh, civil farm a couple of years ago. So there are some payments that we have, that's all excluded debt, which means that the voters at one time voted to approve additional tax levy to fund these items, and then once they're paid for, that payment goes away. And just like Knox Trail, I think it was paid two years ago, that came off the books, and then the library, I think, so this number was over five hundred, we had a library renovation project, that number is coming off next year. Then we have employee benefits, um, and then, uh, general liability. So this is where your money goes. So when we collect your money through tax levy, we collect state aid, and we collect our local receipts, we then fund education and town services. One of the things that are not here are water and sewers, they're funded by user fees through water and sewer enterprise funds, you can see those here, but you can see your money, fifty-one percent of your money goes to education, that's again, the three, the three types of school districts, we have our traditional Spencer Eastbrook, we have a vocational, we have out of district. In addition to that, the next highest item is public safety, is fourteen percent, insurance benefits, uh, I'm sorry, public works are just over ten, insurance and benefit are ten, and then you can see they go down from there. Our administration of finances, which is primarily offices in this building, six percent, culture and recreation is only two point six percent, again, that's our library and parks and rec, our debt services, two and a half percent, health and human services, which is board health and veterans, and our land use plan, one percent. You can see where your tax dollars and others, other revenues that we receive go. So this is the proposed FY two thousand and fifteen budget for the regional school district Spencer Eastbrook for next year. As I mentioned, we had a seven hundred one thousand dollar, uh, which shows up right here, in the additional local assessment of last year, so that's one of the numbers that we're dealing with as we move forward to next year, that we didn't have funding for. In addition to that, we're also looking at that five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is a dis- a total additional request for this year. So the way it works with regional school districts, we're a member of, is they have a separate committee, they're essentially a separate government entity, that committee votes, adopts their budget, and then they assign assessments to the communities based on their revenue structure. So when the budget or, or the article comes to town meeting, it's not necessarily a budget article, it's essentially a bill. This is the bill, this is what we want you to pay, um, and you can either say yes or no, okay? So as part of their increases, and as part of their structure for their budget, again, minimum local contribution, as is set by the Department of Education, we're seeing two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar increase, four point six, two percent, I'll show you that on the next slide, how, how that impacts our budget. Again, they're asking for additional locals, uh, contribution with a forty-five percent increase, uh, a slight increase in transportation assessment, which is, uh, two percent, uh, and then there was a small, a reduction in terms of the debt that we have or capital projects that we pay. There was the David Proudy High School feasibility study project that we were paying for, once the school district crisis happened, they dropped that project, so we made the last payment, we made a double payment last year at the summer town meeting, and that number went away. But overall, they're asking for seven point zero, seven percent increase, and this is the number that we're saying, because we already have a deficit, we're again, have a further deficit, those are the two numbers that you're gonna see on the override question related to. So this is our revenue side, and I apologize for being kind of small here, trying to fit everything on page, but we're expecting twenty million dollars, just over twenty million dollars in total revenue next year. And again, I mentioned several different categories of revenue, the top is tax levy, then we have state aid, then we have estimated receipts, I talked about local receipts, that's the size tax and other, and then these other things are transfers, they're just gonna, they're gonna cancel each other out on the expense side, so for now, I'm just gonna focus on the top three. But if you recall on the slide before, um, the minimum local contribution rate as set by the Department of Education is two hundred and fifty-two thousand, okay? Next year, our two and a half increase that we're restricted by, proposition two and a half, only allows us to increase the levy by two hundred and eighty-seven, so they're eating up two hundred and fifty-two of our two eighty-seven, just by increasing the minimum local contribution that we're required to pay. Um, so already, now I'm looking at, if you recall, we have eight point eight million dollars in expenditures, anything that's new, over and above and beyond last year, you know, that's gotta be paid for by an additional revenue, which as you're gonna see, we don't, we don't have it. We're allowed a lot for a little bit of new growth, new growth is when someone does an addition to their house, builds a new home, and mid-year that you're, you're taxing, you can allow, uh, that money to be added on, uh, based on an estimate, and certify that number, Department of Revenue will in the fall. These are the debt exclusions, or the debt that we have, that I was referring to, as all excluded debt, so we're allowed to go above the fiscal two thousand and fifteen tax levy limit, which is last year's limit, plus two and a half, plus a little growth, by these debt-excluded approvals that the voters in this town previously approved at town annual elections or, or special elections. And again, I mentioned Wired Village School, that number shows up in the school district budget, uh, Bay Path, they've just, uh, borrowed money, they're doing a major addition, it's under construction now, the fire department ladder truck, town hall renovations, simply farms, I mentioned. So our total tax levy, twelve point six million, is gonna go towards that twenty million dollars in total revenue. The other, um, uh, the second revenue source is state aid, two point three million. If you look at our state aid numbers, I mentioned, they were as high as two point eight million in two thousand and eight, they went as low as two point one million two years ago, slowly creeping back up. This year, we're proposing two point two, three, three. What I've done is I've added a hundred thousand dollars for es- uh, estimating some receipts from the meals tax, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit later, uh, but that's additional revenue, I'll talk about it now. The meals tax, the meals tax is a local option tax. So legislature, legislature in two thousand and ten, gave towns an option, they could, if they went to town meeting and adopted this legislation, they could then have their restaurants add, on top of the six point two five percent sales tax, they could add point seven five percent on top of that. All that money, that seven percent, then goes, when you pay your bill, the, uh, the restaurant owner then sends all this tax money to the state. They then in turn would send that point seven five percent back to the towns. So they've been keeping track, they know how much they receive now based on the six point two five, based on all the restaurants in town, they can predict how much revenue's gonna come in if we adopt the local option tax. So we have an article on the town meeting this year to adopt that tax, if we did, we're projecting a hundred thousand dollars, and those numbers are based on Department of Revenue numbers, again, based on hard numbers, as they have the numbers, what the actual receipts have been from the six point two five sales tax. So that's the only increase that we're showing here in terms of state money, uh, it's technically not local aid, it's, it's technically a pass-through, the restaurant owner's collected, it goes to the state, the state then redistributes it back, but they pay it out quarterly, just like they do our, their state aid, so that's why I put it under this revenue source. But we're still far away from two point eight, if you recall, I mentioned FY two thousand and eight, we were at a high of two point eight, we're still five hundred thousand dollars in the middle of that. And then our local estimated receipts, again, this number was as high as two point six, we're only projecting one point nine this year, uh, the estimate for this year was one point eight six four. We did have a little bump up last year, uh, due to the major building permits that were associated with the abbey project, the brewery project, and also with the, um, one of the Wilson Street solar camp apartment. So those numbers are, are abnormal, about a hundred thousand dollars more than normal, so really, we're looking at about one point nine million, which again, is seven hundred thousand dollars lower than we were getting five, six years ago. And these other items are transfers, we have some capital projects that we're doing, all the water, sewer, private enterprise funds, costs are in here, some other small transfers, but our total revenue projected this year is twenty million one point four. So I hope to start with the revenue side, I do a budget, I figure, first figure out what we have for editors, and then we're gonna go to the expense side, and at the end of the day, we're gonna try and fit this number in, and that's what the board's been talking about doing. In the years past, we've been able to adjust our, our, our number, the operating budget for the town, uh, but this year, we can't do that without, you know, balancing the one point two million dollar deficit. So we have the operating budget for the town at eight point eight, I went through that a little bit in detail, uh, sewer enterprise fund, water, sewer enterprise fund, sewer enterprise fund, these are all of our education, uh, assessments, and then the capital program that I was talking about, uh, we'll have, we're gonna do, try to do the boiler here at town hall, replace that, and then the water and sewer district has some purchases that they're making out of their free cash, what they call retained earnings. But at the end of the day, when you total all this up, twenty-one million one forty-seven, and we only have twenty million one twenty-four, leaves us a one million twenty-three thousand dollar shortfall, okay? So that is why we're asking for an override. We don't have money to do what we've been doing all along, because of impacts based on the regional school district budget from last year, based on their projected increase this year of seven percent, um, and based on other adjustments that we had within our budget, um, we're at a point now where we've done all those things that I mentioned, we made personnel reductions, we cut positions that aren't coming back, we cut, uh, we, we had employees with wage freezes, employees have increased their health insurance, we tried to de- address retirement, uh, insurance liability. Uh, all those things were done, we're at a point now, we're, we're already at the bare minimum in terms of the staffing levels that we have in the departments, in terms of the benefit structure that we have for employees, we can't go any lower than we already have. I challenge anyone to find another town that has all their employees paying forty percent state interest, I guarantee you won't find one. Uh, people are working that way, but we're the only ones that are at that point, and we started three years ago. That's why we're asking for an override, okay? It's not an easy decision, the only people that can put a ballot question for an override is these five members. Um, and I'll talk, uh, a little bit more before I get that one, about what an override is, but proposition two and a half, proposition two and a half was adopted in nineteen eighty, and it went into effect in nineteen eighty-two. Um, under this statute, under proposition two and a half, there's two poverty tax limitations that towns have as it relates to tax levy, taxing their citizens. The first is the levy ceiling. The levy ceiling is the total annual property tax revenue, raised by the municipality, shall not exceed two and a half percent of the assessed value of all taxable property contained within it. Right now, the town of Spencer is, we, we, we go to the levy, we tax you to the full amount, as I showed you, that two and a half percent, that two sixty-seven, we are far away from our, our, our ceiling, we're only about one point four percent in terms of the total tax levy in relation to the total value of the town, we're well below that. However, we are limited by another part of the statute, which says we can't increase the actual levy limit every year by more than two and a half percent without additional, uh, approvals from the town. Voters, that's the exception. So the exception allows the citizens of each municipality to override the two and a half percent restriction or limitation put on towns to address specific needs of the community, thus giving the citizens, the voters, direct control over their taxes. So you're gonna have direct control through answering the ballot questions, in terms of where your additional tax levy would go, if it were approved. So again, the only way an election ballot question for an override can be put forth before the voters is by the board of selectmen, doesn't happen at town meeting, and petition our, citizens cannot petition our override, the only people that can do it is the board of selectmen. There's a difference between what happens at town meeting and what happens at a ballot. Town meeting voters authorize appropriation, they authorize the board of selectmen to spend money, completely different than what an override does. An override, what that does is, as it relates to the appropriation, it says, in order to pay for those appropriations, or portion of those appropriations at town meeting, we'll allow you to tax us additional levy above the two and a half percent. So that's why you don't see an override question on, on, on town meeting, completely different. One relates to tax levy, and the other relates to what, when we're gonna spend, and that giving me. The questions that we draft, when we draft ballot questions, have to, they require a statement of purpose for how the monies for the additional tax assessment will be used. We have to tell you where that money is gonna go, what department, and for what service. We also, the questions require a specific dollar amount of the additional taxing authority being requested in the fiscal year, which we'll use. So we're gonna tell you, and I'll see in the question, which department, how much money, and starting when, if that tax is going to affect it. And then the question is approved, if the majority of the people voting on the question vote yes. Authorization results in a permanent increase in the tax levy. So, two years ago now, actually, coming up to you, yeah, two years ago, there was an issue with the Spencer Rescue Squad and their ALS service, their van flight support services that they provide to town, they've been doing that free for fifty-four years, uh, something like that, they came to a point where certain revenue issues, uh, collection issues, they couldn't no longer do it for free. They came to us and said, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to continue operating this service. So that was a ballot question that the board of selectmen put on the ballot, um, and it was approved, that number got permanently added into this number. So for all sakes and purposes, this number was eleven million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand the year before, the override was approved, that meant the levy could go up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars permanently, and then what we have in the budget back in here, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars built in here for the, okay? So that's how the levy gets increased, through a ballot, uh, through authorization, through the voters, and that's how it goes to the budget, and then it's, and affects the service. So here's some information as it relates to the annual election. So the annual election, as I said, our general viola said it has to be on the, um, I hear the people, uh, the second, uh, Tuesday of the month, so this year, it's May thirteenth, polls are open from twelve PM to eight PM, all registered voters, I believe, voters here, registration is closed, right? Registration's closed. Uh, so if you haven't registered, you're not gonna be able to, uh, to vote, um, in the election. Again, we'll have questions for certain election official positions, and again, we'll have these override questions. There's a third question regarding computer purchases, I'm not the best person to answer that, as much as the school department is, but I'll try if anybody has any questions on that, but my presentation is focused on the override, uh, questions and budget questions. Um, again, proposing, uh, to get authorization for proposition two and a half overrides, two of them, the budget deficits. So we reduced our seven hundred one thousand dollar hit from last year, we have additional, uh, some additional revenue, uh, and then we also have some additional expenses, but the shortfall, the board of selectmen have decided, and you can find somebody going through all of the budget, applying the meals tax, our shortfall's four eighty-four, this year not seven oh one, so that's the portion of the board of selectmen said, that's the portion of town Spencer, from a general government standpoint, that's the point, that's the shortfall in terms of our, our, uh, budget, and then the five thirty-eight, again, represents the seven percent increase that the school district is asking for the budget. Approval of each question requires a majority voter approval. So there are two separate questions, two separate statements of purpose, two separate dollar amounts. So it's not as if you could vote for the school article, it passes, I'm sorry, you can vote both of these, but if the school article passes and the town doesn't pass, you can't take that school money and apply it to the town, it has to be applied to the school five thirty-eight, same as the vice versa, if, if the town's four eighty-four is approved, the school number's not approved, we can't take that and apply it to that. Each question requires separate majority approval. So this is question number one. Question number that you're gonna see on the ballot is the town services election question. Again, we have a specific dollar amount, a total, we have a, um, specific department listed, and we have assigned specific dollar amounts for each department that represent specific services, and I'm gonna go through those on a separate slide. Um, but again, you will be asked to vote, shall the town of Spencer, that's us, your town officials, be allowed to assess an additional four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes, that's going above the two and a half percent restriction, for the purposes of funding the farming departments and services. I'm just gonna say the departments, I'll go through the numbers afterwards, council and aging, the library, fire department, police department. Council and agent, library, fire department, police department, highway department, parks and recreation, board of health, my office, town administrator, town accountant, assessors, treasure collector, town clerk, expressional services, and the miscellaneous boards and committees. So this is a problem that we have, that the board, going through the last six months, is trying to figure out if this dollar is not funded, and we don't have enough revenue to fund our operating budget, these are the things, and these are the services, that we need to pull back from if this is not approved. I'll go through the more description in a second. The school budget is a little different. We're not required, they're not required, although you're free to ask at town meeting or other, any school committee, what that five thirty-eight, eight forty-two, what would happen if that was approved? The law says, in our article, we have the opportunity on a town meeting warrant to authorize them to move forward with a budget assessment. We drafted our warrant article contingent upon this question passing, saying that the assessment that we've been assigned, that eight million dollars or so, eight million one fifty-six. This, and it's broken the question you see on the other warrant article, you see it's broken down in these four segments, that this, if it's approved at town meeting, is contingent upon the article passing, I mean, the question passing at the ballot box. If this fails, or if the ballot question fails, they can't move forward with this budget, okay? They're gonna have to go through a series of events like we went through last year, and I don't know the in detail. So their shortfall that we've asked for an override for is five thirty-eight, forty-two. That's every penny above the additional seven one hundred thousand that was issued by the Department of Education in December of two thousand and thirteen, okay? So it's not broken out of the department, we get a bill, we get a signed assessment. It's up to the school district to determine if this was not funded, what the impact would be on their budget. And that's something they would have to deal with after May thirteenth, if this is not passed. So everybody wants to know what the impact of the override is. These are the impacts of approvals, okay? So the approval for the town service override would add fifty-five cents to the current tax rate of thirteen fifteen. That's all we have to go by, the current tax rate, I can't tell you what the current tax rate's gonna be once it's certified in the fall, remember? So if everything is equal, we can tell you that the tax rate would go up fifty-five cents, thirteen fifteen to thirteen seventy. For the Spencer's book, for the school district portion of the override, that would be fifty-eight cents, up to thirteen dollars seventy-three cents per thousand tax rate. And if they both pass, it would be fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents, an increase of a dollar thirteen on the tax bill. How does that relate to my tax bill? For the town services, the average in this town is just above two hundred thousand, so that's right in the middle. Let's try to put this up here in the middle. So you can see that if the town override passes from four hundred and eighty-four thousand, the impact on the average home and town Spencer is gonna be an average taxable of twenty-six thirty to twenty-seven forty, or a hundred and ten dollars increase. Divided by twelve months, nine dollars a month, right? Nine dollars a month, you're gonna be asked to maintain services for town government. Same thing with the school district, if theirs passes, it's a little bit more, it's not one ten, it's one sixteen. Same thing, divided by twelve, you're almost at ten dollars a month in terms of the increase of the impact that would be on the tax bill. Both pass, two hundred and twenty-six dollars on the average taxable, right? And then I'd show some other numbers. Just to let everybody know, this presentation's up on the website, so if you leave here tonight, you have questions, go ahead and look at it, call me. If I have a typo, please let me know. People at home, if you wanna look at it, and then email me or call me if you have any answering questions.
No, you just put in the packets that were sent out to some of us.
Yeah, those, I changed, yeah, I changed those because it had the average at first, and then it went high.
That's the question.
Exactly, that's the same one that's stuck. Okay, so now with the impact, if I do not vote for this override, or if the majority of the voters do not approve the override for town services, what happens? If you recall, I listed four hundred and eighty-four thousand, I listed an apartment, and I listed a number, I should say, selected it. So these are the things that will not happen if that override is not passed. Either the warrant article at town meeting, or the override itself on the ballot, if it's not passed, these are the things that are gonna happen. There's some department heads here tonight, if you have specific questions in terms of how related to specifics, programs or other, they can answer. But council and agent, one of the things we will not do, is we will not use Maple Street for a senior stint. The plan would be, if this override didn't move forward, or this funding didn't move forward, ninety thousand dollars are gonna be allocated towards an expense budget for operating that facility, heat, electricity, et cetera, maintenance, all of those things. Based on numbers that the Board of Selectmen evaluated from past school department budgets, if we didn't receive this override funding, this will not happen. In addition to that, the library will be reduced by ninety-two thousand dollars, which is almost twenty-five percent of their budget. They would reduce their hours by twenty percent, from forty to thirty-two, eliminating Saturdays, and I think another day, half day during the week. That would eliminate seven of the twelve or so positions in that department. Cutting expenses, the expense budget for books, professional development programs for staff members, and we'd be eliminating certain programs, you know, the child library and other programs that we have. We wouldn't be able to do those with the reduced staff we have and reduced hours that we have. We also, there'd be other implications, possible loss of certification, we wouldn't be able to use other libraries for free like you would here if we maintained our forty hours. Public safety, fire department and police department. Fire department would not be restoring the training of firefighters. We have forty-four on-call firefighters right now. I don't know if people know this, but we have one full-time fireman at the town Spencer, one, and that's the chief. He does all the training programs, he does all the professional development, he goes to regional meetings, he does a lot of other things than firefighters. So we rely on forty-four on-call firefighters that get paid, some of whom nine dollars and forty-two cents an hour to show up at your house if your house is on fire. We will be not restoring training that we've eliminated for those people over the course of so many years. We now do one training per month, that's not enough, and the Board of Selectmen made a conscious decision, that needs to be back in the budget. We would not be able to do that without additional money. The police department, we would reduce a portion of their overtime, and in both departments, we would be reducing their facilities maintenance. They both have buildings, obviously, the police officers are out patrolling the streets. The fire department, we have one guy there, he's not cleaning the buildings, he's doing other things, the firefighters on the call. So we have maintenance staff that help us, we have to take back those hours. We'd actually make a reduction in those hours by fifty percent in terms of our staffing, our facilities maintenance of those two buildings. Our highway department, we would be eliminating one position, we've had this discussion. Mr. Prince is on the, we used to be in the highway department, we had as high as seventeen staff on the highway department back twenty years ago. We have ten positions right now, we're gonna go down to nine. So there obviously is gonna be an impact in terms of services, there already was this year. In addition to that, we would be eliminating expensive monies, including the highway department budget. That includes monies spread out over sidewalk repairs, consultants that use to survey roads before we repair them, and other. Parks and recreation, we have a sixty-six thousand dollar budget proposed for parks and recreation this year. We would be eliminating all of that, salaries on that portion of the budget, so there would be no lifeguards, no waterfront director, there would be no swimming programs at the beach this year, and we'd eliminate all the five thousand dollars for our seven parks in terms of maintenance. For health, right now, we provide, we hire someone to go to the schools and conduct a school fluoride program. We would eliminate that service. We'd have to close town hall one day. Right now, the town hall is closed on Fridays. We allow for hours on Monday and Tuesday to make up for that. And we also opened a couple years ago a little bit earlier, starting at seven thirty until eight. In order to find a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in that budget, was being proposed as possible elimination of one day of open hours for town hall. So that would reduce court staff hours by twenty-five percent. We'd be eliminating three part-time positions, and we've reduced the building inspector hours by forty percent. And then on top of that, miscellaneous board salaries. So we took all of the other salaries outside of the selecting. You have the planning board volunteers, you have finance committee clerk that gets paid, the park, the American park that gets paid, zoning board, conservation that receives small stipends. We're no longer gonna pay people when they volunteer to sit on the board of town by eliminating that last portion. I tell you, no town has done that. It's very hard to get people to volunteer. So what would be the impact of a failure of the override for the regional school district budget? We would go through a similar process to the one through last year. This process is set out in Master and Launch, Chapter seventeen, Chapter eighteen. Spencer spoke to the regional school district after the override election. If it failed, would have thirty days to reconsider, amend, and resubmit a budget based on the issues that have been raised. That means they could submit the same budget, they could submit a lower budget, or have to submit a higher budget, okay? Then they could have seven days after that, they would have seven days then to submit the budget to the member town, Spencer and Spookfield, unless they received the fifteen-day extension from the Department of Education, the National Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which was done last year, they applied for a waiver, they got initial fifteen days, and they took that full amount, and that's when they reduced our assessment from thirty-five percent to twenty-six percent. Member towns would then hold a special town meeting within forty-five days to act on that revised amended budget. If the special town meeting, or as we did last year, if it required an override, failed to approve the budget, the district would then be allowed the opportunity, as they were last year, for the district-wide town meeting to reconsider amending the budget. That meeting, as it was last year, is held on Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon. We'd be open to all Spencer and Spookfield voters, they would be checked in, having an opportunity to vote. Be one question, one question answered, one question, and that would be rather not to ratify the budget as been amended by the school district. And then again, as was the case last year, if that budget, if there was still no budget as of December first, Massachusetts Department of Education would come in, and they would set the budget for the district. And obviously, as part of that would set assessments that we'd be required to pay. It would be the same situation when we were last year, where we'd be in December, we'd have to have a special town meeting to adjust our budget if necessary. There's not any time asked for an override between December first and December thirty-first. Last year, we had to use reserves to make some cuts, we did not have enough time to ask for an override. We had to have forty-five days to schedule an election. So we didn't have enough time before December thirty-first, and time to get tax bills out before December thirty-first, to ask for an override, hope for that money to balance our budget last year, okay? You have to get bills out before December thirty-first. If you do not, tax bills are not due, so way beyond, you've already spent, you know, eight million dollars plus, and you've got no money come in, government will basically shut down at that point. So that's a possible scenario if the override for the school doesn't pass. So with that, a lot of information, appreciate your patience in listening, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, all on above. Let me take a quick sip of water. So if you could, good, when you ask a question, just have them stand up.
Yeah.
Have them stand up, and if you could just give your name.
An address.
An address to the chair, and then we can report for the record, so.
Richard Brany, Farm Row, Spencer. What was the total amount you could go up on the two and a half, was it two eighty-two?
In terms of the two and a half percent increase?
Two hundred and eighty-two thousand. And you said the school, their increase would eat up two hundred and sixty-two, right?
Two fifty-two.
Right, so.
So if their only increase is only going to two hundred and sixty-two, why do they need five eighty-five?
Well, in terms of what they need is up to them. We don't, again, they're a separate government, and they oversee the regional school district. We don't know, you know, they're the ones who are supposed to explain through their budget process to the voters, to parents, to staff, and to the towns, why we need this additional money, okay? So they will tell you they went through that process, they came up with a budget scenario in which they needed.
Go to the one where it shows their increase this year over last year.
Yep, so what they're saying is, the two fifty-two is a number set by the Department of Education, which, you know, it's a killer, right? So there's a couple things going on. It's a killer, and then it almost eats up all of our two and a half, and there's nothing left over at the town. Unless you have increases in state aid, and state aid's not going up, and local receipts not going up. We're nowhere near where we were a couple years ago, but it's going up for two reasons. One is just because the cost of education goes up. So the state's gonna say, "Last year, the minimum you should have been pumping into your school district is five point four seven three million." Next year, it's gonna go, it's gotta go, if it's not gonna go now, it's not gonna say the same. Utility costs, teacher contract obligations, certain mandates, we're gonna say the number next year is gonna go up. In addition to that, the regional school districts, and for other districts, actually, all districts within the state, they have this funding source, their state aid's called Chapter Seven. So through a long process, long formula, which I'm still studying, I don't know a lot about. They basically set, again, a number that they're gonna contribute, the state's gonna contribute a certain portion of dollars to the regional school to fund their budget, and the remaining amount has to come from the towns. What's happening is, let's say, at a starting point, five years ago, whatever, it was seventy-five twenty-five. Seventy-five percent Chapter Seventy, and twenty-five percent town, okay? Now what they're saying is, we want to make that shift such the burden now becomes, it's going to the towns away from the state. The state's saying, "That's unsustainable for us." So now what they're doing is, they're going from seventy-five twenty-five to seventy thirty to sixty-five thirty-five, sixty-four. So they have that shift built into their formula. So we're paying a higher amount because the cost of education goes up, and we're paying another double, and on top of that, because of the fact that the Chapter Seventy shift is happening. In addition to that, last year, we had a triple hit, since the other things, because we had the seven hundred one thousand dollar bill on top of that increase happening. So, you're right, this is a killer, two fifty-two is not sustainable for us, when they're basically saying, "You only have fifteen thousand dollars left to address any shortfalls you have in your eight point eight million dollar budget." Thanks. So, and then on top of that, they're saying it costs more to fund transportation. In addition to that, we need to creep up, we have other costs in our budget, so we need to go up here, you know, forty-five percent.
Mr. Chairman James Weyland, East Wolf Street. Going to the town services side, I know this is pennies in terms of the amount of money that's being proposed, but on the board stipends, still ten thousand dollars. If I did my math correctly, I believe it's between the planning board and zoning board, and the finance clerk comes to about ten thousand dollars. What I'm wondering is, is that either can that be eliminated since it's already eliminated this year, or allocated elsewhere within the budget, say, to the tax override account? The reason I'm saying this, because I know Adam just mentioned that it is tough to keep people to volunteer, but as planning board chair, I haven't heard any complaints from my members, so that's something I would like to be considered.
Well, we're gonna have a discussion after this, if you'll stick around. One of the things we have to do is, we have to plan for what happens if the four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar override does not pass. We also have, once we've done that, but we also have to plan for what happens if the meal tax doesn't pass, okay? Board of Selectmen, when the meal tax came in, it came as a petition article, it was an article that was put on the warrant, town meeting warrant, by these folks. It came in by petition led by the finance committee, projected a hundred thousand dollar revenue. The Board of Selectmen said, "Okay, we can't have," and at the time, the deficit was five eighty-four. "We can't ask for a five hundred eighty-four thousand dollar override for us, five hundred thirty-eight for the schools, new computers, and on top of that, ask for a tax, an additional levy," which, again, it's not paid, it's not based on your property, it's based on users that go to a restaurant, whether they're from Spencer or from another town, coming to town. That money is then passed through to the state, and then it's used to come back and contribute to our revenue. So in their eyes, it wasn't fair to ask for that and not use that money if it's a potential revenue source to lower the override amount. So if you recall, I went through all of these things, why were you able to avoid overrides? Health insurance cost control, personnel reductions, wage adjustments, deductions in budgets. Board of Selectmen said, "Why don't we use that hundred thousand dollars instead of asking the taxpayers for five hundred eighty-four thousand dollar override? Let's ask for a four hundred eighty-four thousand dollar override." So that's what they've done. As part of that, we have to plan for what happens if the town meeting article for the meal tax does not pass. So one of the things that we're gonna talk about tonight is, what other things in the budget other than, sorry, I'm going through this quickly, but, other than these things, because if the override fails, or the town meeting article for this fails, these are gone, right? So now on top of that, what happens if the hundred thousand dollar meal tax fails? So, you make a good point, wouldn't it be great to do some shifting and say, "Why don't we keep ten thousand dollars in the library budget or somewhere else, get rid of the stipends in the overall budget?" Problem is, is it's already set here. So if we go to do that, we cut that out of a hundred thousand dollars, John had this conversation today. If we go to take this ten thousand dollars and cut it out of the remaining part of the budget, the eight point three million, which is separate from the four eighty-four, we can't do that, it's like doing the double, double cross. So that's, we can't, we won't be able to target these items if the meal tax doesn't fail. Or if this fails, then the meal tax fails. So that's the question we're gonna have after this, if you'll come stick around, in terms of where else will we go on the budget to try and be prepared if the voters don't approve the meal tax.
I have a question.
Stay in there.
My name is Anthony Albi, East Wolf Street, and my understanding is, Chapter Seventy funding for the school system doesn't finalize till after the town meetings for many of its municipalities. So would it be in the town's interest to amend the bylaw to have a later town meeting where they have finalized Chapter Seventy by the state, so that they have a finalized budget? Because it's almost a little bit targeted. Because they could come back and say, "Well, you don't have the budget that the Chapter Seventy contributions from the state aren't what we thought." It's actually lower, especially with the shift that you were talking about, and that's a challenge. On top of, it's also my understanding that within a lot of towns, the transportation funding has been dropping. funding has been dropping, the regional school districts, is that true?
Uh, the overall cost or the reimbursement?
The reimbursement.
The reimbursement, yes, you're correct. Every year, it seems like the House and the Senate vote for this process, this scheme, where it's cut, or the governor cuts it originally in his January budget, and then the House comes back in the H two budget, and they put it back in, and the Senate puts it back in, and then usually, up, up, it's, it's been, I think, level the last five years.
Because the last, because originally, when it was proposed by the state, they said there would be a hundred percent funding for the regional school districts, but that's never happened, it's fallen down, which is also not even targeted, is it not?
Well, it is, but it's not something that's tied to technically a defined number by the state. It's actually, the reimbursement is, but, you know.
But it is what, it is tied to the amount that the regional school district is requesting from the town.
Correct, correct.
So if their number keeps changing, then it's very.
It's tied actually to their revenue, so, and what is gonna happen is, they're gonna say, they have a twenty-five, twenty-four-point-one-five-million-dollar budget, they have a certain amount of Chapter Seventy, they have a certain part of it that's reimbursing us in terms of regional transportation. What's left over is eight-point-eight, you know, it's ten million, eight percent, or two for sports equipment, right? So, but just to answer your question regarding the timing of this, and last year, you are correct, this number went down. Last year, this number was two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, it went down to a hundred thousand. So actually, the minimum local, to answer Mr. Brany's question, it did go down, however, I asked the school committee that night, if that number goes down, are you then gonna amend this? They said, no, that number, because we have a budget, so this is a revenue, a budget's gonna stay the same, if this revenue doesn't come in, guess what, that number's gonna show up, we add a hundred eighty here, so you're still gonna owe us the eight million. So that's why, I understand your point, if the numbers aren't set till after, there's no, but they've already, they have to adopt their budget before, actually, before that, March thirty-first, they have to adopt their budget, and then we have to act on their, on their, on their budget, right? So, the fact is, let's say we held our town meeting on June thirty, all right, and this number was now a hundred thousand, and these numbers change, we're not gonna realize any savings, we have to, this is the number we're looking at, you know, not, not, not any of these, they would just shift this around, anything that didn't show up here, we then turn in the additional loan assessment. I think last year, the number was real late, you know, the thing is that we have to prepare, you know, for, we need enough time, I know, I think there it happened, but we do have to prepare, especially us in a situation where if our override doesn't pass, our question failed town meeting, we have to prepare for layoffs, we can't let people off June thirtieth and then try to operate July first, you just, you have notification periods, and you collect a bar or anything, so, I don't wanna talk about those things because it's uncomfortable, but yeah, and those are, there's reasons why it's, it's made first Monday, uh, first Thursday in May, those are some of them, but there really wouldn't be a change if we had the true number in terms of this number, because the school district says, we're gonna spend twenty-four million, one fifty-one, that's our number. At the end of the day, see, it's opposite, and I brought this up to the school district a couple of times, and I think it's just a fundamental issue, and I don't know, and I don't think they're ever gonna change it, but, I start with this, revenues, I know every year, I have, the one thing I can, I know exactly what it's gonna be, is this number, tax rate, that's very easy to figure out, what was last year's number, what was the two, what's two-and-a-half percent, and I can have a little bit of new growth, and basically take the average of the last five years, very simple, plus my debt exclusions. Then the state aid number, you know, the state sets it, it kind of moves a little bit, but it's pretty much, it doesn't change much in January or November. And then our local receipts number is, again, based on estimate for five years, so these are kind of, there's a, there's a little bit of flux. This I know. I start with my revenues, I only have twenty million dollars. So when years passed, we then, when it came to expenses, what we did was, we figured out all these other things, and then we got to the town's budget, and if it was more than twenty million dollars, we then lowered this number. That's when we approached our employees and said, hey, can you reduce your health insurance percentage? Hey, can you play, do you have a higher copay? Hey, can you take a wage freeze? Hey, let's eliminate Park and Wood Health care. We did all those things, so we could fit this number into this number. This number now, we can't go any lower, now, we've already showed you everything we've done, you know, employees can't pay any lower than what they're already doing, you know, more wage freezes, and how many people are gonna stay after that hit every year? And then, uh, and then on top of that, um, you know, the number's just so big that we can't make that adjustment. So, so that's, that's the, the fundamental eye, issue I have with the school district is that they start with their expenses, and they say, okay, we're gonna have twenty-four-one million, twenty-four million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand-dollar budget, then we'll go and figure out what we're getting for Chapter Seventy. Whatever's left, that's an assessment, and it's gonna be, last year it was three-point-three million higher than year four, and at the end of the day, ended up being seven-hundred-one-thousand, and this year it's five-hundred-and-thirty-eight. It basically say, whatever was not being funded by the state, the responsibility is in the towns, they don't adjust their twenty-four-one-fifty-one because we have problems on our end.
What's the percentage versus you took there?
It's probably eight-twenty, like eighty-one, eighty-one, eighty-four, that's.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bobby?
Bob, Service Twenty-three, Summer Street, through the chair. Adam, there's been a lot of confusion about the debt exclusion specifically from the school, and it's too bad Dr. Malvee wasn't here either to defend, support, or explain any of this. Hate to throw this in your lap.
Okay.
The debt exclusion, there's a lot of confusion with that, is that gonna be funded by the schools, or is that gonna be funded by the town? And how did that get brought forward? Because there's been a lot of confusion, I mean, especially watching the tape again, it's not real clear as to who was actually calling for the debt exclusion, was it you guys being asked, or them throwing it in your lap? Can you explain that?
Yep. So this is a question Bob's referring to. So I got a letter on March seventh, I gotta take that back, I got a letter March twenty-eighth, from the superintendent, it said, the regional school district needed to purchase six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar worth of computer upgrades. That followed up a meeting that they had here to talk about their budget on March twenty-fifth. Three days later, I got a letter from them, we're moving forward, we have a purchase, you know, letting you know, so you can prepare for your town meetings and potential debt exclusion, okay? So then I had an email exchange with Dr. Malvee, debt exclusion, borrowing, you know, debt exclusion equals borrowing, that's exactly what it means, debt exclusion means you're gonna borrow money, you're gonna have debt. So, I understood that as, the regional school district is looking to borrow one for the, for the purchase of six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar worth of computers, and I can tell you that, that was always the understanding of the Board of Selectmen and myself, because our portion of eighty percent, we don't have five-hundred-thousand dollars lying around, here you go, you know, here's, you know, we, we have occasionally in the past, we have included their capital items in our capital, we have a separate capital committee, all the staff has items, fire trucks, you know, garage doors, small items, copier, microfiche, film reader. So they, they make these requests, and then we try and fit them within the free cash that we had. So, like I said, the free cash that we had this year, we had about eight-hundred, four-hundred-thousand dollars went, we had four-hundred-thousand dollars left over, I had a bad winter, two-hundred-thousand, that four-hundred's now going to snow and ice, we just, two-hundred-thousand dollars left, we're gonna fix a border, town hall, and that's it. So, there's no other way to pay for that except for borrowing. So now the question is, is it the school district borrowing, or is it the town borrowing? Has the town Spencer ever borrowed money for the school district, for a purchase that they need?
Not in my town.
Never. So, if it's, you know, if it's a fire truck, we don't have to borrow money, right? Feasibility study, they needed money, they borrowed for it, Wyre Village they borrowed, Mount Trail they borrowed, East Brookfield they borrowed, you know, whenever there's been any borrowing, it's always been with the regional school district, okay? That was our assumption, and I think that's where some confusion lies. Dr. Malvee is, you know, maybe just being new to the district, didn't understand that that's been the practice, and I'm sorry, I always thought that was a practice elsewhere in terms of regional school districts, but maybe a different where he's been, but that's my understanding, is the district goes out and borrows money, makes a purchase, and then assigns an assessment in terms of debt capital to the towns. So, as I showed before, what's happened in regional school district budgets, we have a line on a long-term assessment, long-term can be five years, right? So we have, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars in here for Wyre Village, up until then, we had, last year we had fifty-two thousand, so the feasibility study, okay? So what happens, they will borrow the money, eighty percent will be assigned in terms of annual payment, let's say they borrowed six-hundred-and-thirty-two over five years, plus interest, the payment ends up being a hundred thousand dollars for the town of Spencer, the hundred thousand dollars is gonna show up here, okay? Now the debt exclusion question, the debt exclusion question in this discussion with East Brookfield Selectmen, that you don't have to do a debt exclusion. We, and we didn't do one for David Crowder High School, he was a fifty-two grand, it's actually forty, I think, and then it went up last year, but it was about forty thousand dollars, and he said, all right, we'll fit that in our budget, we're not gonna ask for a debt exclusion for that, we'll try and fit that in, it was low enough, it was forty thousand, far cry from five hundred, which would be eighty percent of six-thirty-two, so, towns have a choice in terms of how they pay for these things. One of the things we have is, we're gonna do a capital purchase, and the district's gonna borrow money, one of the things we can do is, we can ask for an exclusion, a debt exclusion, proposition to have override, to again, increase the levy, make that payment, and then with the, what's been paid for, then that hundred thousand dollars or whatever just goes away, okay? So, if Board of Selectmen here are understanding that our portion of six-thirty-two is eighty percent, has to be paid through borrowing, would be paid by, would be borrowed by the district, which showed up in an assessment, in an adjusted assessment, if it were approved, we, we only pay that five-hundred thousand dollars for what we borrow, and if it was excluded, okay? That's not to say that the town of East Brookfield could fund that portion of that purchase in another way. They could do free cash, do a transfer, say their portion's a hundred-and-thirty-two, I don't know, a little off, like eighty to eighteen there, but they could take a hundred-and-thirty-two in free cash and assign that to them, and give that to the district, they could include it in their existing operating budget, using new levy or whatever they have, or extra levy they have. So debt exclusion choice is really the choice of Board of Selectmen, in terms of, again, they're the only ones that can put it on the ballot. So, so let me back up, so the question we have, Article Twenty, that you're gonna see on the town meeting warrant, and all this is on the website, so the town meeting warrant, the art, the ballot questions are on there, this presentation, myself, my number, my email, Article Twenty. So, according to the statute, where the regional school district exclusion borrows money, the towns, member towns, have the opportunity to disapprove of that borrowing. So they vote, then the towns, under Chapter Seventy-one, whatever, have the opportunity within sixty days to hold a town meeting, to move forward with a no vote, to double negative, or move forward with a disapproval along in the spend. So if you recall, on your F town meeting, in FY two thousand and ten, I think it was May of two thousand and nine, maybe, there was an article on the town meeting for David Crowder High School feasibility study, it was six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, they were gonna borrow all the money, the state, the Massachusetts School Building Authority was gonna give him a portion, whoever was left was gonna be assigned to us, and then it was gonna show up in that assessment number, okay? So, state law says we have sixty days to disapprove it if we want, or we just let it go forward with borrowing, okay? So, in this Article Twenty, you see, it's written as, in Article Twenty, it's written as six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, people say, why is it six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand? Bet is only eighty percent. Because this is just approval or disapproval to move forward with borrowing, it has nothing to do with appropriating money. The article relates to funding school district budget, which shows up in another article, Article Five, that's where appropriation happens. So in Article Five, we have the school district budget, as you saw it, the five, this totals to five-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, but this was in that chart I had in school district budget, you were asking the two-fifty-two increase and all that. So, this is the appropriation for the district, we have another article, borrowing, so if they, if we move through, move forward, any borrowings or borrowings that moved forward before, they would show up in this debt assessment assignment as part of the appropriation. This gives authority to give them money. So back to Article Twenty, so, we understand, maybe six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar worth of computers, the town Spencer, and I don't believe the town of East Brookfield, they're borrowing money on their behalf for their needs, for their capital needs, they borrow the money, and then because you have two members, or like Bay Path, they have ten members, they then assign the bill based on your enrollment to all the towns. So, a couple of years ago, we had a number here for seventy-five million dollars, it wasn't appropriation for seventy-five million dollars, it was to allow Bay Path Regional School District to move forward with borrowing seventy-five million dollars. People said, why the heck, I'm at a town meeting and I'm standing up, and I'm gonna approve an article that says seventy-five million dollars, how the hell are we gonna pay for that? Our, our portion was like two-point-seven, okay, but by law, we think, if they, if the regional school district committee votes to borrow money, we then can disapprove that, or, and so this is actually gonna be changed to disapprove, by the town council advising, the motion has to be different, but we allow them to move forward or not move forward with the borrowing, the total borrowing, not a portion of the borrowing, okay? That's Article Twenty, is allow them to move forward or allow them to not borrow. So, if this failed, they couldn't borrow the money, the debt exclusion doesn't even matter, okay? The second part of that question is the debt exclusion. So town Spencer basically says, and as I showed you, we have, look at this right here now, we have a one-million, twenty-three-thousand-dollar deficit, which is four-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand on the town side, and it's five-thirty-eight, forty-two on the school side, right? So if on top of that, the school district gets approval to borrow money to buy computers, now we have a payment of a hundred-and-five thousand, and I don't do this, guess what? I gotta go back to the town's budget, eight-point-eight, and I gotta cut down a hundred thousand dollars of whatever the payments. So that's what we said, we're already dealing with one-point-one million, or one-point-whatever deficit, we're already looking at overrides and cuts on our side, we're already looking at, you know, meal tax to try and offset some of that. The only way that we really can allow you to move forward borrowing and assign us an assessment is if you exclude the, if we exclude the debt, which would mean, going back to the levy, uh, it would show up. It would show up here. So we would have Wyre Village School, you'd have a line here that said, computers, purchase one-hundred thousand dollars, remember the numbers, I'm just throwing that number out there, Ball Park, one-hundred thousand dollars. That would allow us to bump this up to twelve-point-seven, and allow us to pay their bill, okay? So that's been our understanding, is that we've never borrowed money for them, they're a regional school district, if they wanna borrow money, do it. If they have no intentions of borrowing, we don't have five-hundred thousand dollars to hand them, right? So I don't know how it's gonna, how they're gonna make that purchase without borrowing the money. We don't do the borrowing, might assume is that they would borrow the money. And if they find other creative ways over the next month or whatever, to fund it with E and D, which is their version of free cash, if they choose to fund it because they made savings in, in some other area, our health insurance wasn't as high as we thought it was gonna be, or we have unfilled positions or whatever, and they decide to fund it a different way, that's great. But the only way that the town Spencer officials have decided, we can give you five-hundred-thousand dollars for computers this year, is through borrowing, which you would borrow, and then assign this assessment, and then we exclude that debt through the levy. We're also hearing, I think there was a discussion that night, when they made the presentation of us on the twenty-fifth, that they're gonna need another six-hundred, seven-hundred next year, and I think there's a third phase on it. So, as you can see, we're not gonna be able to afford that within our assessment without excluding. You have to do an override for capital purchase, because you don't want that to be a permanent assignment to their budget, it's gonna, you know, want to pay off if it comes off, right? So that's why it would be a debt exclusion. So that was our thinking, and I think there's some confusion, the confusion lies with E and B of Selectmen, and I talked to Mr. Fayar, the confusion there was that, we've been talking about debt exclusion, they don't have to do a debt exclusion, and we agree with them, they don't have to do a debt exclusion for this purchase, they can use other means, existing levy, free cash, whatever, to give the school district their portion of that assessment. We, on the other hand, because our, our bill is eighty percent, it's now, it's five-hundred dollars, and we have it on free cash, we can't give them any money without borrowing, we never do borrowing for them, they borrow, that's, that's where, I think.
Well, that's where my confusion was coming from, and I think other people's too, and the bottom line is, if it does pass in town, and it go, you know, who pulls the, who pulls the funding?
If the article passes the town meeting, which allows them to borrow six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, which they don't have to borrow six-thirty-two, they could borrow five-hundred, East Brookfield can give them the cash, one-thirty-two, whatever number, I don't want, a couple percent, let's say they give them the one-thirty-two, and then our portion's five-hundred, and then we have the debt exclusion that passes at, at the election, then they just assign us, we do a revised assessment, and we have a hundred thousand dollar bill.
Okay.
You know, I guess.
Al?
He answered most of my questions. The, any debt exclusions coming off, and when are they coming off? Also, I didn't hear the phase two, I knew there was a phase two, possibly a phase three on their debt exclusion, but I didn't hear it was another.
It's not their debt exclusion.
They didn't, they didn't give a figure for phase two.
Um, we had some discussion, I thought it was a million, but, um...
They, they get phase one, and they never gave, and this is the trouble with the school committee, they're very vague on when it's coming, or when they're doing this, or when they're doing that.
Al, real quick, because the board knows you, just state your name and the address.
Oh, damn, sorry, Al Adjo Mello Road.
Thanks, Al.
Couple, couple questions.
Okay, thank you.
First one was debt exclusion that are coming off. So, Wired Village School, got a while on that one, right? Wired Village School, I mean, here's Ball Park, five, six, seven, I don't know. That happened before I was here, so I don't know the timeframe on that. I know Bay Path, they just borrowed, um, you know, in their second year, I think it's a twenty-year borrowing. This number, this ninety-two is gonna go up, because they've only done two borrowings, it's gonna go up, they're gonna do a third borrowing. So if you drive by Bay Path Regional High School, you'll see a huge addition of a hundred thousand square feet, here, that's where that money's going towards, that's our portion. Again, they borrow the money, they figure out what the assessment, part of the loan payment is, based on enrollment, there's ten towns, our payment this year's ninety-two, Auburn's could be seventy-five, Max's could be twenty-two, whatever, and that's our portion. Fire Farm Ladder Truck was a seven year?
I think it was seven.
Yeah, it was a seven year, and I think we're in year four, so three years that will come on. Um, Town Hall renovations, we did a ten?
Ten.
Ten. So it was like a million dollars worth of borrowing, a million plus, uh, and it's, uh, with interest, and it's, uh, we're in year three, so we got another seven years or so on that one. Sibley Farm is only a five year, and I think this is the third year, so that'll come off in two years, okay? So there are things that we were, I don't know if it's a thousand of time, but we have, we, you know, one of the things that the, the fire chief put forward was engine number three, is a four hundred thousand dollar ticket, it's a fire, a fire truck, it's one of our frontline vehicles, it's twenty-eight years old, you know, recommended we dispose it for twenty-five years. Based on all this, we didn't put it on for debt exclusion, because we already knew, you know, we're up against a challenge here, so that's coming down the road. We've been talking about a twenty million dollar road project. We were, December of two thousand and twelve, right before the school crisis hit, we had a meeting, a financial management finance subcommittee, which is myself, which is John Stevens, Tony Pepe, two members of the finance committee, Tom Parker, I think Paul was off you. Getting ready to go forward with, uh, we've had a payment plan for four or five years now, that basically said your roads are filmed, you know, on a scale of one to a hundred, they're probably gonna average, I think it was like fifty-one. So you, you have a plan, we hired a consultant to figure out how we would spend money to address the road condition, and the number was about twenty million, and we do a series of borrowings with the debt exclusion, fix the roads, and then, as we mentioned, the twenty million we come on. We were planning on doing that in May of two thousand and thirteen, before the crisis with the school hit, and now we're back wondering when we're gonna do that again, so, yeah. Bill?
Bill Schamit, Sixth Dale Street. Is the language on the debt ex, the computer purchase authorization, is wording in there subject to the approval of the debt exclusion?
Good question.
Because I don't wanna find out that we have to cut five hundred thousand dollars from the budget because the articles approved at town meeting to let them borrow for computers, but then the debt exclusion fails.
Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, says, when regional school districts are borrowing, you can make those, or, in terms of their regional school assessments, you can make them contingent upon proposition two and a half override, or, or proposition two and a half debt exclusion, so yes. Uh, it doesn't, now, this is an old draft, I'm sorry, I don't know if I have the right one on there, I don't have the website on here, but yes, Bill, if you go, David, you have the web right there, I don't have my Wi-Fi. Yes, that article is, says, that borrowing, and the last part says, contingent upon an override, passing of an override, so yes. So, that was one of our concerns, and we had the discussion the night we closed the warrant. We said, um, that's, um, what happens is that they're allowed to move forward borrowing, but then our debt exclusion fails, and then we have that hundred thousand dollar payment, and then we gotta cut our hundred, our budget a hundred thousand dollars in the middle of the year, that's not, so, I did some research, talked to town council, and the next day when we set the warrant, they made their vote of that article, contingent upon, if it could be contingent upon, maybe contingent upon, maybe contingent upon. Right. It's on there.
That's listed, the warrant is listed down.
Right, so the warrant, it's on, the official warrant has it, I'm sorry, it's old draft of my, of my life.
Anybody else? None?
Board members, any questions?
I think we've seen this enough a lot. I think we've done every day we can, so.
Heidi, you got a question?
Heidi?
Heidi, Dr. Malone, um, one twenty-eighth Mechanics Street. Do I understand correctly, if we had a two and a half override, that that would mean for our average tax bill an increase of twenty dollars a month?
On which one, on both?
I believe on the...
Okay, so this, this chart shows the, you know, your average property value, again, if you look at your assessors' property power, you look at your tax bill, you're gonna have a value on your, of your home. It's not gonna be market value, it's gonna be sale value, it's gonna be your assessed value, which is based on, again, on a formula, appreciation, much rather. So of your value of your home, the average in Spencer, I think it's like two hundred thousand, but two hundred thousand in Spencer, so the average tax bill, right now, is twenty-six thirty, you'd go up a hundred and ten dollars, and it'd be twenty-seven forward, so a hundred and ten dollars divided by twelve months, it's less than ten dollars a month, right? So same thing with the school district, at one sixteen, and then two twenty-six, less than two forty, so, yeah, approximately twenty dollars a month, you were gonna vote for both over. The question on the debt exclusion, hey, Mr. Goddard, how come you don't have a dollar amount in the debt exclusion? They don't have a dollar amount in the debt exclusion, 'cause they lost as they can, number one. Uh, but number two, it's not up to me, and it's not up to voters, how many years they borrow for, whether it's five years, seven years, or ten years, whether it's even principal or whether it's even payment, those things are decided upon by the regional school district committee if this goes through, okay? So people ask me, well, what's the tax impact if I, I know I have, you know, I've seen signs up around one, the, the town that say one point seven million equals five hundred dollars on your tax bill? That's not true, okay? Because we're not, the six hundred, what that person's doing is adding four eighty-four, five thirty-eight, and then the six hundred and thirty-two, and getting one point seven million. That's not the total number for the Town of Spencer. If the borrower went forward, and everything passed, so Town Spencer, it would be four eighty-four, five thirty-eight, which gets me to one point one-three, one million, twenty-three thousand, and then our portion of the six hundred and thirty-two, eighty percent, spread out over how many years they decide to borrow, plus interest, which I'm just throwing out as a hundred and one. So technically, it's probably somewhere around one point two million rather than one point seven. So if I was looking at one point two million, it's not five hundred dollars on my taxes, it's, you know, again, the two twenty-six, plus a hundred, you know, quick math, whatever that is, it's probably three hundred dollars, right? Right there? Okay? So again, that's, I, you know, I don't have a number here, state law says you don't put a number here. State law says, one, you allow them to move forward borrowing or not, that's why the article says approve or disapprove, the full amount. You wanna let them do it or not? Seventy-five million, six hundred grand? Yes or no? Once that's happened, and they're allowed tomorrow, and we decide we're gonna exclude the debt, we're gonna say, whatever you decide, your opinion is gonna be, whether you borrow five years, seven years, ten, even principal, even payment, whatever you decide that number is, whether it's a hundred grand, seventy grand, or ninety-two grand, or whatever, we're gonna increase our levy on this page. We're gonna increase our levy right here by that amount. I don't know what that amount is. They could decide not to borrow, and then those aren't the only names, the questions are the only names, it's possible.
Okay? Anybody else?
So we start with a couple things in the agenda, so, welcome to the sticker.
Anything on the board, Tony?
I would just like to say, I think this is, it was a great presentation, it's important to look at the history, it's important to see the trends, important to see what we've done. I think you have a, fiscally speaking, a very conservatively inclined board, we take this seriously, it's, it's, uh, the idea of override, it's, I think that we're, you know, got opposed to that. And I, and I hear often at this time of year, when, when increases are proposed, that, you know, the town needs to hold the line, well, we have held the line, we've moved the line, we go closer to ourselves, but what we can't change is, is the kind of battering we've taken by the economy, by the reduction in, in, in local aid, and by the increases in the schools, and that's really what we, we don't have control over that. I don't like to sit up here and make excuses for, you know, for, for, you know, for us, you know.
Tell you why we have to propose an override, but that's, that is the fact. I, I suppose everybody who comes on this, this board thinks there's, there's gotta be savings to be, to enjoy it, and I, you know, I've expressed my opinion on a number of areas, but, you know, never to the scale it would reduce an override, we're always looking for money to save in, in small and large amounts, but this is, this is a, this is a tough decision, it's been agonizing here for, for all of us, but, you know, that, those are the facts, this is, this is, we can't lay it out more clearly than this, and I think you did a great job.
Thanks for coming, again, it's, it's great to have tenants, and I know it's very difficult to come out on a Wednesday night, which is not a normal night for us, but we appreciate you being involved, and we hope you get involved at town meeting, and, um, if you have any questions, just email me or call me or stop by.
Just one quick thing, Mr. Chairman, um, today, this time of the year, every year, we do Adam's eval of the board, and, and then when we're done, the chair and the vice chair sit down and go over it with Adam before we finalize it, which, uh, Mr. Woodbury and myself did today, and, and his eval was outstanding last year, and it got even better this year, so he actually went up over a point, and I, I can tell you, I can echo John's comments that he, he is an absolute asset to this community, and it's, it's because of stuff like this and questions, the open door policy, it's very easy to work with, and, and we are so lucky to have this guy, um, so thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Make us look good, yeah.
He does, and I will tell you, he had a tough year last year to get us through it. Uh, this board made conscious decisions on what we were gonna do, we make them every day, we lose a lot of sleep over this, whether anybody believes it or not, uh, and this poor guy here doesn't get a weekend off without somebody texting him and asking for help, so, he's the asset to the town, along with our employees who did everything they could, and we're just to a point where there's no more give, so, I thank you, Mr. Administrator, for being here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion?
Whatever time it is.
Could I have a second? It's, uh, call it, what is it, Aaron?
Seven forty-two.
Close enough, seven forty-two, he'll, he'll admit to it. Second, Bo?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna take about a three-minute break, just so people that wanna leave can clear out, uh, those that wanna stay and see what we're dealing with next, in case the meal tax doesn't pass, hang on, because there's more cuts we gotta look at, so, thank you, everybody. Okay, we're back. Next on the agenda is discussion, uh, action, warrant, Article seven, more reduction, so what if?
What if? Okay, so, just to, to rehash, rehash, the, so the meals tax is now Article six on the town meeting warrant. So what that does, it assumes, uh, based on revenue projections provided by the Department of Revenue, that if the local options meals tax is passed, again, it's only a town meeting vote, nothing to do with the ballot, no election, if it's a majority vote at town meeting, the meals tax would be, you know, we'd notify the Department of Revenue within thirty days, they would notify all the restaurants in town, and then starting the next July first, then it would be implemented, and then the first quarter after that, October, we would receive our first payment, assuming a hundred thousand dollars a year. Article six is passed, again, as I mentioned before, the board of selectmen decided to lower the assessment, uh, lower the override amount, or the, the deficit amount from five hundred and eighty-four thousand to four hundred and eighty-four thousand. What it did, it was it restored certain things, certain positions, certain hours, by applying that to the override. However, there's a risk to that, and then if the meals tax doesn't pass, and the override is only the four eighty-four number, you now have a hundred thousand dollar gap that you need to address Article, um, I think that was the only thing that was off, um, because this was from the night of the town meeting. So Article six, right here, I have it up on the board, so Article six, simple article, petition article came in to see if the vote, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty-four, Section two A, to oppose the local meals, uh, local meals excise tax, okay? So that's what we're talking about. Now what I've done is Article seven and Article eight are the two town budget articles. So the, if you recall, as I showed before, the town's budget is eight point eight million and change, what I did was I reduced that amount by the gap, the override amount, the four hundred and eighty-four thousand, separated that from the eight point eight million, leaving an eight point three million dollar and change, main article of the budget. So if the four eighty-four is passed at town meeting, and then is passed at the, at the ballot, and Article seven is passed at the town meeting, you now have a full eight point eight million if Article six passes. If Article eight does not pass, that's the warrant article for the, for the override amount, and these, these are, you can see right here, provided, however, it's continued upon election approval, same dollar amounts here, the same dollar amounts on the, on the question. If this passes here at town meeting, but doesn't pass at the override, these things are the things that are listed, those are the things that go away. So now that all we have left to spend, or have approval to spend, is eight point three seven million instead of eight point eight million. However, this eight point three seven million factors in a hundred thousand dollars of revenue from Article six. So, if Article six does not pass, we need to reduce eight point three seven four oh five by a hundred thousand dollars, because my budget pro forma, going back to this, assumes a hundred thousand dollars in meals tax revenue, okay? So, what I did provide the board was the list of the departments, the line items, the description of what would, it would entail, and in terms of, I'm sorry, I don't have this up here, um, in terms of the which positions, you know, reducing support staff, eliminating the light equipment operator, et cetera, Maple Street School, uh, and then with, you know, what the impact is in the specific dollar amount. So that's provided for you, the four eighty-four. In addition to that, I provided other items, going back several meetings ago, I think it was, to close the warrant on Monday, April seventh, so it was the week before that, it was, um, the twenty-fourth, I think? Uh, actually, the thirty-first, I'm sorry. We had a list of matrix in color of all of the department line items that each board member and myself, and I did mine with staff, projected as what could be, based on service levels, could be applied to the override. The numbers that were left over after the four eighty-four are the items that you have on the bottom of your chart. These things are over and above and beyond, which, one was to fill the five eighty-four, to get to five eighty-four, and then on top of that, there were also additional items that were above that, that weren't considered originally. That includes, streetlights was a topic, the assistant, uh, closing the fire station to the public, which would mean eliminating the part-time support staff, uh, additional expenses at the highway department, in terms of stormwater management, and then all the remaining other items were, uh, closing town hall a second day. Originally, we talked about two days at town hall, which would be like, you know, whatever it was, two hundred and something thousand dollars, which obviously is a major inconvenience to the public, and obvious, in terms of the amount of service level that we have, and also it's a major impact to the people working here. So, um, with that, those are some ideas, in terms of, just for, to start the conversation in terms of what should we do if the meals tax doesn't pass, and we need to come up with another hundred thousand? In addition to that, I have the overall budget, and we can go, there's a question, each, each department line item, you know, the accountant's budget, you know, what she spends on software, printing, whatever, if there's any other ideas that you have from all these budget presentations that we had over the last six months, I know John and I talked about one today, those are all fair game, everything in the budget's fair game out of that eight point three million. What I wanna caution you is, and this came up regarding Jim Wayland's question about the ten thousand dollars, do not do double dipping in where you wanna say, okay, well, if Article six doesn't pass, I wanna cut, you know, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars at the library.
Right.
Because it's already factored into a cut somewhere else. So if they both go down, you factor in a double cut, you can't do that, you can only cut it once, okay? So it has to be items other than these that are our, so that's what we're talking about. So with that, I'll go back to the board, and then it's up to the board, we have to have a Plan B. So essentially, what Plan B means is, before town meeting, this board should vote, and we have next week, April twenty-eighth, Monday, to finalize this, we can just have a discussion tonight, it's a workshop, so next week, Monday night, you can finalize it. So when resident A stands up at town meeting and says, I'd like to know, I'd like to ask the question, if I don't vote for this, or this Article six is not approved right now, Mr. Moderator, what will the Town Spencer government officials do? What does that mean? And then I'll stand up and say, what that means is, we will have to cut, you'll have a revised motion for Article seven, that instead of a motion for eight point three seven million, we're gonna have a motion for eight point two seven million, and then as part of that, I'm gonna tell you what things are gonna come out of the budget, what line items, so that the accountant, on July first, when she sets up her budget, she knows what has funding and what doesn't. So, that's the whole reason for this, if it doesn't pass, what's Plan B? Go to answer that question, Article six fails, what are we gonna do? So, that's, that's where the conversation starts.
Okay, uh, that being said, uh, I'll open it up to the board, whoever wants to start. I think we looked through everything, but, uh, I think it's, it's imperative that we at least discuss this, at least get it out there where we're going with this, uh, you know, and we said this right along to everybody, is we're at a point where, and we always said, everything we do on our side affects personnel, uh, 'cause there's no other place to go with it, uh, and, and I'm not talking small items, uh, you know, maybe combining purchasing, that may save you two thousand, when you're talking a hundred thousand, it's gonna affect people, no matter what you do.
Just before you move forward, I just wanna let everybody know, we have a fifth member who's not in attendance tonight, Anthony Pepe, he's on.
That's why we won't.
So, what, I think, just to, to, to tack onto what I said, I think tonight you should have a discussion.
Right.
Then Monday, when Tony comes back, April twenty-eighth, it's the last Board of Selectmen meeting.
Before the town.
Before the May first, Thursday night, next week, town meeting. You should have discussion tonight, you know, and then when Tony comes in, follow up with that discussion and then take a vote in terms of what Plan B means. And go from there.
Pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of points, just so that we, just so I can wrap my brain around the various scenarios, just with Adam here. So, if we say yes to the meals tax and yes to the override, then there are no changes required.
There are no changes required, however, if the override fails twelve days later, then there would be, we just wouldn't move forward with all the things in Article Eight. So it doesn't.
Just for the purposes of the town meeting, so our point in terms of our, what we need to be prepared for at town meeting. Now, if, if, if we get a no on the meals tax and a yes on the override, that's where we need to make some cuts on, on the floor to bring this, bring this eight, this down a hundred thousand.
I think what I need to say is that for Article Eight, there should not be any motions to amend that article.
To take away from.
Line by line, dollar for dollar, penny for penny, inline, matching up with the override question.
Right.
So if anyone who's watching, please do not make a motion to amend this article because you wanna make sure ninety-two thousand dollars happens in, in, in this budget. If you wanna do that, make sure you vote it to the ballot to make sure that that gets in there. However, you know, we, we can't at this point change the ballot question, the ballot question's already printed out. It's gonna, when you show up for the election, it's gonna be there, it can't change. So if the, if the Article Eight ends up being attempted to change and changes at town meeting, let's say it goes from four eighty-four to three eighty-two, or it goes from four eighty-four and instead of ninety-two thousand dollars in the library, we're cutting ninety-two thousand out of whatever, fire the town administration, whatever. You can't, the, the ballot question is gonna say exactly as this article says now, so please, you know, it does not make any sense to amend this article. Just wanna clarify for voters and people that show up at town meeting, uh, because the article, the ballot question can't be changed.
Right.
If this is changed.
Mr. Chairman, irregardless of whether the override, Article, the four eighty-four goes up or down, it's that, that, that has no bearing on the hundred grand.
Correct.
So we already took care of it, the four eighty-four fails and that's, that list happens on this, now we have to have a list for the hundred grand.
You already have your what-if scenario.
Right.
So what if we don't get funding for four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, which is our gap, then this, then these things go away.
Yeah, the effects of that mitigate, we get this kind of thing.
So that's one what-if. The second what-if that you have to prepare for is what happens if your meals tax is not funded? And if it's not funded, you need to address it.
I would like to also suggest that there is the option of the, of the meals, we're getting a yes on the meals tax and, and a no on in the override, in which case, then this, this Plan B, we've, we have, we will prepare, we just, we don't do anything with it and we just proceed with the cuts with the forty-four. And if, and if we get a no on the meals tax and a no on the override, then, then we have to have, we, then it's, we're up to five eighty-four.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanna be clear on that.
Then if the state comes in on December first, then when they come five thirty-eight, you're up to one point two million, thirty-three thousand.
Okay. You know, Adam, one thing, I think it would be helpful, and I know I've, we've, we've talked about the, the stormwater management and the fact that we, you know, we're allotting ninety thousand dollars, I mean, it's, we've had no line item in, in there in the past, we went from zero to ninety and I've, I've made my points in that in the past. But I think it would be useful, especially since that is one of the possible areas that we could reduce and, and help find that hundred thousand, is, would it be possible to, to get some more detail, say, from, from Steve on what, what cutting the, that stormwater management program might entail? And, you know, where we, what, what the priorities are as we begin to satisfy the EPA requirements?
Here's what I'm gonna say, is, it's not that we haven't had any line, this line item before, it's that we haven't had the funding for this line item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This number on the bottom left, thirty-five, forty-five, and ten, has been there since Rob McNeil was here, who was two, two superintendents ago in two thousand and eleven, knew that because Lesser had just gotten fined, we hadn't done a darn thing in terms of stormwater management since the permit came out in two thousand and three, that heaven forbid EPA comes, shows up one day knocking, we're subject to major fines. So that's when we applied for the grant in two thousand and twelve because this number was not put in the budget again. So in two thousand and twelve, we applied for a grant, what we did was with, the first grant was thirteen towns, we received three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And what that grant was geared toward was try to get towns up to speed where they should have been from two thousand and three up until two thousand and twelve. You were supposed to map every catch basin, locate it, field locate it, survey equipment, go out and map every catch basin, every pipe, every outlet, every culvert, every drainage, uh, outfall, anything that has a drop of rain going through it that's within town infrastructure, you were supposed to go out there and map. We hadn't done anything. And you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Then on top of that, we hadn't done any regulations, we finally did adopt a bylaw. We were subject to fines because we didn't adopt a bylaw. We were subject to fines because we didn't do any education efforts and we didn't do any stormwater, this is what SWP is, we didn't do any stormwater pollution prevention planning on any of our own sites. Because what you're supposed to do is you're supposed to adopt regulations as a town, so when anyone does any activity within the town that eventually is gonna cause dirt, water, whatever, to go into your stormwater system, you're supposed to adopt a bylaw and make sure that when people go and do a certain type of development, they do certain things. If the, is, is current, is a certain steepness, if you're within so many distance, feet of a catch basin, if you're within the distance of a wetland, you need to comply with certain conditions when you're doing development or activity. So, uh, we hadn't done any of that, not even on our own sites. So what we did was, through the grant, the goal was to try and get, um, a, a bylaw adopted in every community, to try and begin mapping every system. With three hundred and ten thousand dollars, we couldn't map thirteen thou, we couldn't map thirteen towns' infrastructure, we could only do a portion of it for each town, okay? One of the things we did was we bought a piece of equipment, survey equipment, that we could share amongst the town. So that, once you got outside the grant and what it could pay for, you then had a piece of equipment that you could share and then you could then use and you could have your own highway staff trained and go out and use that system to then go and like, locate. We got nine guys, you know, great, we have a piece of equipment and we can train them, but when the hell are they gonna go and do it, right? So, um, that's one of the things that's in here now is that, you know, we're gonna have, we could, we'll try and do, remember our engineering aid? That was things that we could have that person do. We could have some of our staff do some of this. When, when Ray is going out and he's cleaning a catch basin, you know, he could then document, you know, the location, he could then, you know, you know, you're supposed to document the, not only the location, but the condition, so, all of those things. So, there are certain things that we've been able to incorporate within our activities now with existing personnel. In addition to that, there's been certain things that the grant was able to do, provide for standard operating procedures for, you know, certain activities on town sites or that developers or single-family homeowners, when they go to a project, it's now consistent in all the towns, we went from thirteen towns up to thirty, right? So there were certain things that the grant did, however, there's certain things that take real work, effort, field work to do in order to comply with US EPA. So one of the things that's now coming out in the two thousand and fourteen permit, so last permit was two thousand and three, expired in two thousand and eight, they said that until we come up with a new permit, you have to comply with everything in two thousand and three. We didn't do a darn thing until two thousand and twelve, through, until we had the grant. Then we got two more grants, we got a hundred and fifteen thousand in two thousand and thirteen, and we just got eighty thousand again. So, we're gonna start doing some things, we bought another piece of equipment because now we have thirty towns, so now we have two pieces of survey equipment. You're talking about satellite ready, you know, high-tech equipment that towns will use to locate their equipment. We bought iPad-type tablets for all the communities so that they can use those, a quick effortless way of documenting the condition of, of the conditions of a catch basin. So we've done certain things, however, the next permit, when it comes out from United States EPA, it has all of those things that it had in the two thousand and three permit and then on top of that, it has new things. One of the things you have to do is we have to test water quality sample at every catch basin, at every pipe, at every drainage outfall. You're talking about thousands of pieces of municipal infrastructure, stormwater related, that you have to test. You have to take a water quality kit, test it, and you have to stand it there and you have to test the water coming out of it to see if there's any illicit discharge or wastewater or sewage or whatever, being discharged through that pump. You know, we have nine guys to do it, we've never been asked to do that before, our nine guys are spread out then, we don't have any money to go and test thousands and thousands of locations within the community. So how do we do it? What we did with the grant, what we did was we drafted an RFP that could be used by all of the communities, an RF, actually it was an RFQ, qualifications, so that we could advertise and we could hire, we could get thirty towns together, pooled together, hire a vendor to go out and get the best possible rate, because we have the purchasing power of thirty towns instead of just one, to get the best possible rate to go and perform this work. And then, this is how we would fund our portion of the RFP, RFQ, of hiring a vendor to then go and test all of those outfalls. So that's where the forty-five thousand comes in. In addition to that, we have to keep going and, and locating all of our system, it's not completely done. So that's why the thirty-five thousand's there. And then the ten thousand dollars there is you have to update your regulations, you have to update your bylaws, update all of your education materials. We actually have a website that's joined by the thirty towns, we have to continuously update the documents on there. And then in addition to that, we hire a consultant, uh, to go and then do an annual report to EPA every year before May first. You have to put together a thirty-page report that says all the things that you've done in terms of stormwater. And if you haven't done any of that, you're getting fined. So, uh, you know, that's why, like I said, the Town of Auburn has had two or three hundred thousand dollars in their line in a budget for stormwater. They have engineers doing just this work because their town's a little bigger than us, they have more infrastructure. They have staff person doing all this, okay? And they've had it since before two thousand and eleven, since, but when we first sat down and we went to the grant and I said, Town of Auburn, would you like to be part of our grant? Town of Shrewsbury was another one. Town of Shrewsbury, I said, well, the US EPA said we had to locate our stuff in two thousand and three, we did it in two thousand and five, we're all located. Town of Auburn says, we've been doing this since two thousand and six because we were able to put the money into the budget before the economy crashed. We never did it, never got into the budget, then the economy crashed two thousand and eight. There's no way you can add ninety thousand or a hundred and twenty, whatever you needed, or hire a new engineer, a new staff person to do this during a time where you're cutting positions and all that other stuff. So we've done everything we can, we've been told by the state, this is your last grant, we've given you five, six hundred thousand dollars over three years. You know, hey, it's time that we start funding other projects throughout the state. You've done great work and, and testament to our work that we've done, we've actually, there was actually three other regional stormwater groups created in this last grant round that got funding up in the Merrimack, uh, up in the South Shore, and, and others that received, the Ponds River Watershed Commission was one. They got funding, they copycat our project, they're using some of our documents. Our savings being transported to other communities within the state based on our grant project and that's one of the reasons why we were funded because it was something that could be used over and over. At the end of the day, the permit that comes out this year, it just came out in New Hampshire, so we know what's gonna happen in Massachusetts because it's gonna mimic what just happened in New Hampshire, it's gonna have this requirement and that's why this is in there. So, could we eliminate this budget, could we reduce this budget? Absolutely. Is there a consequence to that? Absolutely.
Adam, if I, if I could, is, I know, you know, and John's brought this up almost every time we talk about it, and Steve was still here. I don't know if there's any questions for him, but.
I wrote the grant, so I don't.
If we, if we don't do it, because we are mandated, uh, and we know other communities have already been fined on this. So to keep reducing and taking away from something that they either gotta start doing it now, or the fine was up to one community.
Over, over a hundred thousand, but I think what people need to understand, there's different ways you can fund this unfunded mandate. One is not at all, and then just risk it, two is incorporating it into your budget, three is doing an override. I think what people need to understand, I was at a presentation last week by US EPA, and you know what other towns have done in Massachusetts? There's a handful of them, I know Town of Reading was one, they've adopted a stormwater tax. So on top of your property tax, on property, on top of possibly your meals tax, we, they have a tax in which they tax you based on the square footage of impervious area that you have on your property. That means your roof, that means your pool, that means your.
Drive line.
Drive line. And then for businesses, it means their parking lots, everything else. So they tax people a fee on top of their regular property tax based on that stormwater, they, they hired a consultant to go around, figure out the impervious area at every single residence, every single property in the whole town, figure out what the tax is, let's say, you know, point four cents per square foot or whatever. And they adopted a tax, so they then take that tax revenue, they pump it into this account line item and they fund their stormwater mandate program that way. That's what EPA is promoting and trying to get towns to do. And I said, okay, thanks, you know, I mean, it's just, but, and understand, there's different ways to fund this and there's different things that are going on throughout the state that we should know and people should know is, we haven't done that. We're not proposing that tax, I, I, you know, I don't know if there's any appetite for that, I don't think there is certainly in these economic times, but I'm not suggesting we do it. I'm just suggesting that there are towns out there that know they have to do it and they've taken it to the nth degree where they're actually taxing people in order to fund the unfunded mandate. Because you have regional school district assessments going up, because you have insurance costs going up, because state aid is down, because, you know, you just, how am I gonna fit this mandate and avoid a fine from EPA? At the end of the day, people gotta remember, the whole goal here is to improve water quality. So there is a really good intention here, is to really improve the quality of water because every raindrop that comes down, hits a road, is eventually gonna end up in a lake, a river, a stream, a pond, a run-up pool, wherever. So there is really a good intention here to maintain the quality of our water resources. The problem, however, is like other mandates, the regulation, the enforcement, does not come with a funding source to help towns prepare for it. We've been left on our own since two thousand and three. We are, we're getting there. I mean, we're, we're almost at ninety percent of the way there, so if EPA comes in, we can say we've done all this and we're in a pretty good position. However, with the two thousand and fourteen permit coming out, the new thing that's coming out, that the key thing is, is the inspections. So, yeah.
Right.
I know more than I wanna know about stormwater as a town manager.
Well, thank you for that distinction.
The good thing is, is you got us.
I mean, it's, it's certainly, if you're not dealing with it every day, it's definitely a hard thing to contemplate and the other hard part of the contemplate for a town is, why the heck is the federal government making me come in here and do these things to improve the water quality? And then not allow, you know, give me any money to help me do it when I don't have any money to do? And that's a problem for a lot of communities.
All right, so I would say that, that based on that, do you guys have any questions?
Um, I, I see the streetlights keep popping up on here. Can you see if David can come in Monday? Because I'm not gonna be in favor of shutting off one streetlight unless he says it's not needed, so. Not one. I'd much rather do the town hall and the.
I think what we're gonna find is, and I, and I appreciate the conversation, I think what we're gonna find is, with every single line item that we go back into the budget, we're gonna have this scenario of discussion of, of what the consequence is and, you know, just like everything on here, there's a huge consequence to shutting off the streetlights in town. There's, there's a, there's also a positive in that it's not impacting another department, we're able to maintain stormwater or maintain hours, but does that con, you know, you have to figure out, is that consequence, which is the consequence that's the most palatable for this board to accept?
Okay, you know how this board is, and public safety's number one and that's public safety. And that's what I wanna see if, what percentage of that is public safety, what percentage is courtesy, you know?
As in, could, is it possible that that number could be reduced by a portion?
Right.
Based on the fact that there are certain lights in town that don't affect public safety?
When I was on in ninety-four, there was a, how many did they shut off, Bo? It was a ton.
Yeah, they shut off quite a few.
And then if you wanted your streetlight on, you got on the, you got on the agenda and you came in and then you could plead your case and then.
Or pay for yourself.
No, yeah, or you could pay for yourself and then the board would turn it on or not turn it on and you could pay, and I forget, they were like twelve hundred bucks, I can't remember.
No, it wasn't that much, no.
It's a good idea.
I mean, there, there were some lights in town that you could put out. I mean, when we had the blackout and we were looking, coming up Main Street when it's totally dark, you didn't even know where you were going, you know? But there is streetlights that could go out, I mean, I ain't in favor of, anything at an intersection should be left on, you know? And like using our Main Street, you know, there's some that you could go off on Main Street, you know, anyplace where there's a street, there should be a light.
How about private roads, Bo, do we pay for, do we pay for streetlights on private roads?
Uh, we, I've been riding around, we do have some.
Electricity.
Yeah, we do have some lights on private roads.
Why do people on private roads always get knocked just because it's a private road?
Because Tony lives on one, so I feel the need to, and he's not here.
I mean, they pay the same taxes, sometimes more.
Yeah, but no, we do have streetlights on private, private roads.
All right, so we can ask the chief to come in and, and see what, what effect it would have as far as public safety, I don't have an issue with that. I don't think you're gonna shut off all the streetlights in town.
No.
And even if you did a portion.
I'm not.
I mean, I don't see that happening amongst our conversations going down. So that's gonna leave you with about eight items and maybe a partial off of that depending on what the board feels.
Again, if there's other things in the budget like John suggested, you know, just like in my life, we've been through that.
And we've done a hundred times and we got down to this. So I mean, you wanna keep kicking the can down the road or you wanna pick it up and say, okay? And unfortunately, that's the point we're at and nobody likes it, but we can whitewash it all we want, again, but here we are with the what-if. Sorry to say it that way, but that's just the way it is.
So we could do like other towns do and past boards have done, when you need an override, say we're gonna lay off eight cops and.
But we didn't do that.
And firemen and do all the stuff that'll get people out to vote, but, you know, this board doesn't operate that way, we're responsible, so we're gonna take the least effective things or the, the things that make the least impact first. And, and we've been discussing this, the public safety is number one, it's fire, police, highway. That's why they have the least amount of, um, affecting their budget and I wanna keep it that way, so, I'm, we're not gonna shut off every streetlight in town. If that's your plan, I'll run a sticker campaign on election day because I'm not gonna let you do it.
At the end of the day, just, I'm just, remember, I don't get to vote here.
Exactly.
Remember, he lives in Sturgis, he isn't.
Exactly, and we already did your review, so you're all set.
The stones thrown.
Yeah.
Funny how.
I'm gonna throw a rock at my house.
How boastful you are once we announced that you got a great email.
Hey, I'm not boastful, I just said, I just said I don't get to vote, it's your decision.
So that being said, it really leaves nine items that we, we've came, we've gone over and over again. And, and again, these are the ones we always said we didn't wanna do, but, and we're gonna leave it open until Tony gets back. But, and, and those nine items that are on here, you know, and you can run through them, man, if you want, or whatever you wanna do, but it's where we're at.
Just waiting for a vote.
You know, we're not going to vote tonight, we're going to discuss tonight, remember?
Yeah, there's only four seats there.
I talked to Tony, Gary, and he, uh.
He was here when I talked.
Yeah, and he had a lot of, well, if thens, you know, if this was, and he had questions that I could answer, so.
And I want him to have the opportunity, it's only fair.
I just want to pose one, one more question, just somebody to think about, and you may already have an answer here, but obviously we need to deal with Tony here. When, when we talked about, uh, about, talk, list the various town offices, so is, is one option, would one option be to, to close certain offices a, a day and leave others open, or is that everybody?
Well, I think if you're looking, no, I mean, it's, again, if you're going to, if you're going to impact this service this way by eliminating hours in certain departments of town hall, you can't have a day in which the treasure collectors office is open and then everything else in the building is closed.
Right.
It's just not going to work that way.